Finance, they work behind the scenes. So you're gonna see the difference. But it's all equal as far as to the sweat equity they put in to the city. It's gonna consist of enterprise funds. And then almost at the last part of it, which I'm pretty sure everybody saw, is the employee payroll schedules. There's, I'll tell you initially that there's four ways that those employee payroll schedules have changed. Number one is for years of service, reclassification, MPD stipends, I mean, Nogales fire stipends, and promotions. And all that is inclusive in our balanced budget. I'm glad to, I'm glad to say that. As we turn to the end of the book, there is reclassification request, new position request, along with classification justifications. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jean. And again, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Stop us at any minute, at any time during the presentation. After departments do their presentations, they're gonna, it's gonna be a time for questions and answers. So after the presentations, we're gonna go straight into line items. And again, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. And hopefully this, this goes, looking forward to two smooth days full of communication and hopefully agreement that we're working towards, you know, the common goal of the city and our constituents and the residents. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Finance Director.
Thank you. First, I just wanna thank Sergio and the rest of my department for helping put this book together. It was a smoother process this year than it has been. It's a learning experience. And then having Mr. Kissinger and Chief Bermudez helping, they've been there every step of the way. So I just wanna thank everybody for all the time and all the directors for the gazillion questions I've asked you over the last few months trying to get this done. And I'm very pleased to present to you a balanced budget with everything included that has been asked by all directors at this point. So we're gonna go ahead. And if you turn to where your budget summary of all funds are, it's page five. Just to kind of knock any questions out right away. Yes, you do see that our budget is approximately 20 million more than it was last year. A lot of that is very, we can explain it. We do have an $11 million grant for the police department that is in there that chief and A-chief and lieutenants have been working on. So that is quite a bit of the increase. Also with WIFA, before we would only put projects we thought might be able to get done during the year, we've decided to put the entire amount of what's available for WIFA in here so everybody knows exactly what is available. So that is the other major increase. So that is why we have such a large jump from last year to this year. Okay, let's turn to page eight and nine. We're just gonna start with our non-departmental budget. With our non-departmental budget, that is where all of the group health insurance, life insurance come, there's certain parts that come from there. For the most part, this budget did not change a whole lot. You will notice that we do have under other operational costs for donations to other agencies. I have put in $100,000. That would be split between the Chamber and the Port Authority. It's been talked about for many years. I put it in there so that we can have a discussion today on what the council wants, because I've heard different sides from different council members. And I wanna make sure that we hear everybody when it comes to that. So I put that in there. And so I'm just kind of asking you all, you know, to, what you wanna do with that one? You will also notice under, we have our carry forward contingency. Last year was at 5.5 million. And I'm proud to say that we are just over $7 million in our contingency. Over the next few years, my goal is to get that up to 10 million so that we have a nice reserve in case, God forbid, something happens and we have to take care of emergencies. So that is moving in the right direction. We've still left the chase building improvements. The 1.9 million is still also sitting here underneath the contingency, under building improvements. So once the council decides what's going to be done with that, we do have that 1.9 million sitting there also.
One question.
Sure.
Up on top on general insurance. Is, I thought insurance, that's the report that Mr. Graldeas gave. Excuse me. Up on top on the, on the general insurance. I recall in one of our meetings, Mr. Graldeas talked about our insurance is not going up and stuff like that. Why do we have an increase on, from 435 to 550?
But when it comes to the general insurance, that is a rounded number right now. We have not received back our exact number from our insurance company. We know that it will probably go up a little bit. We just wanna make sure that we have enough in here. When numbers are in here for the budget meetings, we can always decrease them, which we enjoy decreasing.
Jean, we were talking about, I believe, that's 63.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, which is our general liability insurance.
Yes.
What Mr. Graldeas was talking about was our group health insurance was 63. They're two different insurance. The group health is, is it retirees?
That's the retirees. We're on page nine. Okay, so the group health insurance is the retirees that we pay for.
That's on top.
That's the one on the top. And then the one you mentioned, the 550, 550,000, that's our general insurance that we're still waiting for our final number on.
Basically, what economy is, we supposedly use 396 of the 435 that we had, and we still raised it.
There's still two months that have not been paid for. These numbers were as of the end of April.
Okay, continue.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding the non-departmental? Any discussions we need to talk about?
On the, on the $100,000 that we set aside.
Yes.
I know we received a couple of letters and requests, but there are other nonprofits that would benefit from us looking at them. My main concern, I do agree with the, one of them is the Chamber, the second one, the Port Authority. I completely agree, because I believe they support us as far as contacts with the federal government and as a lobbying arm for us, since we don't have a lobbyist on board. So I think that would be beneficial. The Chamber, I backed the Chamber 100%, but as far as giving them $15,000 right now, I don't think we're currently members. So I think we need to explore being a member first. And I've got different ideas of how we can help our community through the Chamber and not just giving them 50,000. I think that we need to look at the Boys and Girls Club. We're really looking out for our children or kids in our community, our youth. We need to explore something like that. And also our elderly population. I don't know who runs or if we have anything to do with the Senior Citizen Center over on Madison. But I've heard some complaints about no rides anymore. The food has gone down. And we do have a high elderly population that we need to look at too. So I think we need to explore other ideas, not just the Chamber. And I think that we can support the Chamber in other ways and not just giving them a flat check for 50,000 if we're currently not even members. I'd like a little more information on that.
Councilman Graldeas? So on those $100,000, 50 goes to the Port Authority, which obviously you agree with. The other 50 is earmarked, not necessarily for the, well, for the Chamber. But again, you guys can make that decision as far as to if yay or nay, or where it goes. However, not necessarily do we need to cut a check as soon as the budget starts. We can become members, set a foundation, then from there, assess and see where we're gonna go. So basically, this is just the approval of the $100,000.
If I could, Councilman Oso, just, this is just the budgeting. This is the amount that will be available for those types of expenses. It still has to come back to the council for determination of the specific amount from that, the specific amount and the specific entities from that budget. So you're not budgeting specifically for anybody at this point, even though you may have in mind, we're gonna use it here generally, so and so. It still has to come back to council to reach an agreement.
Thank you for that clarification. It's just because it was thrown out that it was a specific.
No.
Thank you.
And with, with your comment said, Mr. Graldeas and council, you know, if we allocate 100, you know, and being that you just mentioned two other very good nonprofits, which is the Senior Citizens and the Boys, Girls, you know, would you guys like to allocate, you know, $50,000 more and have that, that be way of not being, having to go back to it during the, you know, you know, make changes down the road? Right now, it's when we gotta do it. So, you know, are you guys into put, allocate another 50,000? Or, go ahead, Ms.?
My question is, are we gonna open to all the nonprofit organizations so they can apply for it, or how are we gonna handle it?
That's, that's.
Because there's a whole bunch of nonprofits, not only those four. So are we all gonna open it?
That's, that's gonna be the thing. We might be opening a.
Yeah, we're gonna have problems.
Well, but keep in mind, you can open them up to whomever you want afterwards. But right now, you're deciding what's, what's the kitty, the amount. Okay, so, so here, how much do you want, less or more? And if you have more, then there are more possibilities, but depending on. But how it's spent is gonna be up to you later on. But it's just the amount that you have to draw on when you decide how to do it.
Before adding another 50,000.
I'm not in favor of adding more of 50,000. I think that right now, we, as, as our Finance Director says, we need to work, first work and, and get our finances and start saving up some more money. I think at this point, maybe this year, I don't think it's prudent to add another $50,000 for that. You know, I think 100 grand, it's gonna be this year. And we'll see how it goes. And if next year, we're okay in our finances, why not add 50,000? But we're already adding these 100 grand into this year's budget. So I don't think an additional 50 grand is, is needed.
Miss Muntier?
Okay, so what I'm hearing from Mr. Machado is, and I agree that we're going over the budget. And I have a list of additions and suggestions. One of them was actually the Senior Center, in dire need of a donation. But I was also thinking of what we're gonna do with the ARPA funds that we, that I've been talking about for the last few years. We need to share that with the community, because they are, they belong to the community. So I wouldn't, because I have a list of things that I would like to add, it's $100,000 is allocated. And, and, you know, the Port Authority, the Port Authority, and I agree with, with, with what they're doing. There's no question about what they've been doing for years. But other entities have been also doing, and how do we, you know, go about that? So, so right now, it's $50,000 is allocated because someone decided these two entities would be added in there. So it doesn't mean we're approving it today, right? We're just looking at the amounts that you build this, this budget upon that, okay? So, yeah, so someone told you to put those two in there. So we'll go, I would like to, you know, have a discussion about that later. But right now, we're looking at the 50,000, the $100,000. Am I right?
Can I suggest something?
Yeah.
Through this.
Exactly, yeah.
You're gonna be here a couple of days, right?
Two, two days.
Go here, go through the whole thing. And if you have a comment on that particular item, save it. Bring it up, and then we'll save it. And then let, let the Finance Director hear everything. Have the directors.
Present.
Present and so on. You have your questions. Then you can, and of course, make your notes. And then circle back there. You may be able to do the adjustments without a lot of problems or.
Yeah, and you're absolutely right, because it's more efficient. And that way, we can vote on these, because we're not gonna agree. So I think this is not the platform to disagree on some fundings or, you know, what we're gonna fund and what we're not. That's, I don't wanna get into those personal opinions. So what I would, I agree, let's just go over the budget. And then the things that I would like to see budget for next year, we can add that, and then come back to vote on it.
Right, but let me emphasize, like, say, you have certain entities that you want to do and so on. You can certainly bring them up and say, we want another 100 grand because I'm looking at this, X, Y, and Z. But even though the council agrees to put in an extra $100,000 into the kitty, it doesn't mean necessarily that they'll go to those entities until the request is made, once make an agreement, make sure that it's legal, it's not.
And we vote on it.
And you vote on it.
Thank you, it's clear.
Sir Mayor?
Go ahead.
Also for everybody's information, Council, I left you a copy of the ARPA money with expenditures and balance. We have 2.2 million left. And it breaks down everything that has been used for earmarked. There's a lot of monies that haven't been encumbered yet because of, we haven't received the, the equipment. But this is basically a breakdown of the ARPA funds and where we're at with them now.
Continue, Jean, please.
Oh, sure.
And the special events? What kind of special events does this cover, this item, line item?
So being in non-departmental, that can be used for any special event that isn't already covered under the Parks Special Events or the Mayor's Special Events. So for instance, the inaugurations can be covered under here if it happens to be a voting year, like an inauguration year. If there happens to be mid-August, you guys decide to have a monsoon presentation, you know, anything, anything that's normally we don't have, it can be covered under this. That's what non-departmental is for. It's to cover, like, this special event would be for one that wouldn't specifically be already in our budget. Like, the one for parks is specific for 4th of July, Christmas, you know, different parades.
So we went over the 5,000 last year's, and we're budgeting for 5,000 again. Isn't that increased the amount a little bit?
I'm not too concerned about increasing this one simply because we used to have none. Like, if you kind of look, we didn't have any. And then in '22, we only spent $873. And then we budgeted higher because we knew it was an inauguration year. But now we're not having an inauguration year. So we're keeping it at 5,000 as a placeholder. And then we'll keep it at 5,000 unless we start to have new events that the city would like to hold. You know, maybe wanna start doing something for downtown. We could, we could do an event and put it in there this year.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns on non-departmental? Okay, so next, if we move on to the Mayor's Budget. For the most part, we have kept it the same. This is where, if the mayor wants something in particular, we can change it. If there's anything, like, if you wanna have more training or anything in particular, we basically keep it the same. For you to let us know.
Just notes that I took down, Jean, and, you know, and it's, you know, I don't get involved, but like, overtime, we're, we're 3691. Before I came in, it was already at 2976. And, you know, it was already over the 2200.
Right.
You know, would you not wanna put, you know, a number that really justify, you know, what it's gonna be? You know, like, 4,000 instead of 2200?
That number is completely up to you, sir. It all depends on how much overtime you will allow your employee. Based on your number right there that you said before you came in, a lot of that $3,600 chunk was prior. There was a lot of overtime done before. So it's completely up to you. If you feel that you need to have your assistant here more for overtime, I can always raise that.
Because we, you know, basically, we've used almost only $700 in the five months that we've been compared to the 29 that we used, that was used prior. Okay, I'm good with it. Then on, on the group health, why, why the jump to 26?
Okay, so before, the assistant that was in the position did not have health insurance with the city. She was covered under somebody else's insurance. And then the person before that, it was single insurance. It's now covered under family. So it has gone up because it is now family insurance.
We're good. Then on, on, on travel. I know I missed, I missed a trip to Washington where it was Mayor's, Mayor's in Washington.
Okay.
And the 18,000 used to be 8,000 in the past. And we had moved from contractual 10,000 to, to, because we're in the, in the negative.
Right.
Before. And now you're bringing it down to 15. Can you keep it at the 18?
Sure, absolutely. It's your budget, sir.
And I don't know what the, the bottom fuel and all that was, that you're taking off the 400 to.
You don't have a vehicle.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's why it's a zero. Any other questions or concerns on that one?
Nope. Basically, on events. Okay, well, we talked, keep it at, at the 10. Is there, you know, besides, besides, you know, just regular events, I think the city in general, whoops. Welcome, Mr. Doyle. I thought you weren't gonna be present. That's, that's a surprise. Okay, on events and legal, you know, I think in general, we all wanna have more events. We wanna all have, you know, more things to do in the city, more things to do for the, for our community and stuff like that. You know, is there, you know, why does it always have to come from my budget? Or can we, you know, how can we create or, you know, to, you know, is that go back to the, the non, non-departmental special events? Or, you know, because I, you know, I think it's basically a council's budget or where we, where we, where we all talk about something for the community. I don't, you know.
That, that's up to you, Mayor. If you don't want that item in your budget.
No, no, no. I, I don't mind it on my budget. But I think in general, you know, there's things that we all wanna do that, why, why is it just, you know?
Because most of the, correct me if I'm wrong, most of those are already budgeted in the recreation budget, those events. So if you want to put more money into additional events, that's.
That's where we go. Okay, okay.
So for instance, Mayor, like with your special events, the Nogales Night Out that we always have has always come from this one, because that was a mayor-sponsored event. There's certain things from the Christmas parade, like the, the things, the gifts for the judges. There are certain things that will come from this budget rather than one of the other budgets. But it's always up to the mayor as to, if it's a mayor-sponsored event, then we usually took it from the mayor's special events budget. But like Mr. Machado said, if you would prefer, we can always move that all into non-departmental. And so then it's more of a, a group decision rather than it being under the mayor's budget. We can absolutely do that.
Okay, let me look at it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms..
Yeah, that's a good question, George, because, for example, we're doing a float for the 4th of July. Okay, and that's coming out of the mayor's office. So in reality, that's a reflection of the mayor, you know, perceptions of mayor's using up his budget. You know, we don't wanna go there. So there are events, there are things like the float and then the Christmas parade, we're gonna do another float, and so forth. So I have on the list too, and I know that you just said about adding these things later on. But I would like to increase that if we are going to do events out of the mayor's office. But in, in, in reality, it is the council and mayors, because we all represent, we're doing the vote, the float, for example, for, for everybody, representing the office of the mayor, which is the office of the City Council and City of Nogales. So the 10,000 needs to be increased, Mayor, so that we can add some of these other things that we have in mind that we haven't discussed, because that's what we're doing these two days.
Then we'll jot it down, and something will.
Okay.
Come back.
All right.
Right, thank you. Continue, Ms. Jean.
Okay. Any other comments or concerns on the mayor's budget?
Not at the moment.
Okay, let's move on to the council's budget. And there you'll see that it has actually decreased a little bit overall. The main reason it has decreased, if you look at the group health insurance, we actually have one council member who has individual health insurance instead of family health insurance. So that is the reason that one dropped. But you'll notice that your travel and other expenses have all stayed the same. We did not change any of that. We did include a couple hundred dollars for your advertising printing, which you did not have in the previous budget. We also increased your cell phones by 500 simply because most of you now have the cellphone and your iPad or tablet. And then for your general supplies, we increased it to 1,500. That is where the, the council meetings meals are actually supposed to be taken from there, which they weren't, it has now been discovered that. And so this coming year, you will see those coming from there. So that's why we increased it, to make sure there was enough to cover all of that.
The other item, and I see other departments having it. You know, we, we go to, to, to events, you know, conventions and, and conferences and stuff like that. And I know in the past, and we normally, you know, get a shirt for X, X conference, you know. Where does that come from?
That all comes from their individual $12,000.
Okay.
That's why it says travel and other expenses. That would cover any travel shirts, your nameplates, your business cards, everything.
Okay. Now, why, why do, and that just for example, Mr. Doyle, why does he have an expense in, of 10,000 in 1920, 20, of 10,000, and he wasn't even present?
So those six numbers never change. We simply change the name of the, the council member that's in there. So back in 1920, whoever happened to be in that expense account did quite a bit of traveling.
Isn't that a bad perception? It's like Mr. Darno, the mayor, trying to create this, even to all this money spent in the past. Hope that affects you.
If somebody has a question about that, I can go back and I can tell you exactly who it was, where they spent it, and what they went. So I can clear any questions.
So you're the date. Why, why do I have 5,000 something in my, or in fact?
Okay, I can do the same thing. So Mr. Diaz was in that account line before you. So when he left beginning of January and you took over, so that would be his and then yours. Well, no, just the, just the, the line item. But like I said, I can always go back. And if you wanted to see exactly what you have spent since you took over, I can do that. Okay.
So next to the budget, we would only have Mr. Doyle's name up there, right?
We can do that.
It's impossible to know because we don't know what's in it.
Mm hmm.
What's gonna occur, right? But I don't know, maybe the previous one, this one, I would I don't know how to do that if you were prepared to bucket. You didn't know what would be there.
Right, right. We can, we can do that.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Miss Motte.
Um, Jean, you can just change it in code, can't you? The name?
Well, that's what we do.
But what, but you obviously didn't because this name's still on it.
The account.
No, I.
It's accumulated to what would.
I understand that, but why can't you just do something like put the the name of the person and then the name and then a dash the name of the present person that's on it.
That's what, that's what we can change it to.
You can't, oh, you can do that. Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that, absolutely. We just, I guess, never have.
Uh huh, okay.
Cause like, you know, Ms. Lopez, she just stayed in there, so we just kept her name. But no, we can absolutely do a slash on the year where it's split between the two.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I have a question. I have a a question about insurance. Um, I know it's a, it's interesting. Uh, we pay a lot of insurance, obviously, and I've had uh people in the committee ask me about that. Since when has the insurance for the council members been paid for? What year? I know that you've been here for a few. Yeah, I know that, but maybe I thought you would know that. Or someone that's been here for a long time.
It's been paid since you've been here, correct, Carmen?
Yes.
What, well, tell me a year.
And what year did you start in H R?
Two thousand eighteen, but before that, I was part of the payment.
So we're talking about years and years, ten years, over fifteen years more, okay? And that's a decision that's made um by council and 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 mayor. Okay, that's voted on? The insurance for this council and mayor. My question is, is that a voted issue? Is was that voted to pay for the council and mayor's insurance? I don't know the history behind that.
I'm assuming that somewhere along the line, there was council action to do it.
Okay, sometime a long time ago? Okay.
Oh, that's specifically the.
Okay. And that i- is something that can be placed on the agenda for a vote again, we can do to discuss again. Okay, I know it's not a, I know it's an elephant in the room, but I think it should be discussed in the future. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Gradius.
Under the same insurance question, I just wanna make sure we're not double billing for me because I'm on the retired insurance and not the council's insurance or vice versa during my term here.
Now, once you become an employee, you're back into.
Back in. So the the retiree is not getting another hit.
Before you before you were a councilman, then you were being paid at the retirement, but now you're back into.
Okay.
Same thing like me.
Okay, go ahead, Miss Jean.
Any other comments or questions for council? Okay, then next on page seventeen is our city manager's budget. Overall, this budget has decreased. Um, we did include thirty five thousand as a city manager search, and that's up to you guys if you want to use it or not, but we thought we'd put it in there, so we have that spending authority if you guys decide you wanted to pursue with that search. We just wanted to make sure that it was there. Um, but if you kind of look down, overall, their numbers are are staying about the same. They have no capital this year. Are there any questions or comments for?
Um, what does, tell me a little bit about tuition reimbursement. Uh, one thousand eight hundred was uh was allocated, right? And then um so you're allocating two thousand two hundred. Tell me about that.
So when an employee has been with the city for more than three years, they can turn in an application to H R. Do you have them help cover uh costs for college, whether they're working on their A A, their bachelor's, their master's? And so it's always, it's open to every employee who's been here over three years. It all comes to H R. Then H R um, you know, gets with the managers and they decide from there. We have a few this year in different departments. And so if you see the one that's not paid yet, the eighteen hundred and thirty one, so whatever classes were applied for this year, we just have not gotten the bill to pay that yet this year. And then they have requested twenty two hundred to cover classes for this coming year.
Um, okay, so the eighteen um eighteen hundred. Uh, what, someone in this department took classes? Who was that? Who?
Me.
Or just say the, not the name, but the position.
Assistant.
The assistant city manager?
No, no, no.
The, I don't understand.
Assistant to the city managers.
Oh, okay. Is there a policy on that that we could, yeah, okay, I'd like to, later on, you could give us a policy. Okay.
It's in the personnel.
Personnel, okay, I love it. And has to be field related, I'm sure, and staff divi- requirements, okay. Okay, and it's been increased to two thousand two hundred. Uh, they've asked for an increase, the manager's office, okay?
And it all, it all depends on the classes that they put on the application, so it would cover the classes that they list. If they only list a thousand dollars worth, then they only get the thousand. If they list, I think it's up to four thousand. Maximum is four thousand.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Students, students that, I mean, employees that have applied for it, but then they get a tell grant, so they'll, they don't get the reimbursement. So even though the the money is there available, that doesn't mean that we get.
Yeah, and all the, yeah, thank you. And all the employees are aware of this? Every single employee? Good. I don't know, I'm just asking, that's why they're they're.
And then you'll see it in other departments throughout the budget, and every year it's a little bit different.
Mm hmm, okay.
Depends on who who wants to apply.
Okay, so every employee knows that this is available to them. Okay.
Emails go out in March, and then they have until April to get back to you.
Okay.
Jean, I have a question. Uh, you said you haven't received any billings for this amount for last year's budget. What if the bill comes in like in August or September? What is, where does that money come from, from the previous budget or from the present budget?
We actually have until September thirtieth to pay any bills from this year. That's when the year closes. So it would still come out of this budget. Um, you cannot receive items after June thirtieth. But if an invoice comes in for items that we have received or classes that have been taken, it can be picked. But I'm sure we'll have it with soon.
Also, Jean, uh on uh travel for city managers, again, you know, um we had seventy five hundred, used up sixty four hundred, and you're dropping it to six thousand.
They have requested that decrease. It can always be changed.
Okay.
I guess we can, we can leave it like that for now. The only thing I would, I would, um, Sir Mayor, uh members of the council, the only thing I would wanna increase uh for five hundred dollars is is the overtime, regular overtime. I'm not sure where we're going with this, but I have envisioned different projects and and events. Um, I just don't wanna fall short of those five hundred dollars. Might not use them. But I'd just rather have them and not need them than need them and not have it. That's okay with you.
What amount would you like in there, sir?
One thousand.
Okay.
Also, um, if it's okay with you, uh I put another another thousand dollars into uh into travel.
So it's seven thousand?
Yes.
Absolutely.
About it.
Any other questions or concerns on the city manager's value?
I have one question. Uh, where does the vehicle for the city manager um, is it in the back?
Well, it's already been purchased, it was purchased in this year. So that's where you see this amount here. And then anything like upkeep or gasoline all comes under the sixty eight eighty eight for repair. And then under the seventy twenty five for fuels, oils and fluids. So current budget would be any repairs or fuel. But it was purchased outright in this budget.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one? Okay, so next is finance, which means I'm the first PowerPoint presentation. Ours is short, don't worry. And for everybody at home, the camera is zooming up there, so anybody who's watching it online can see the same thing. You wanna hit slideshow? Right there. Do you need glasses? So our finance department. Who are we? We are the city of Nogales. We're the eyes and the ears of the residents. We are the helpers of the needy and together we make a whole. One thing that we strive to do is make Nogales better one customer at a time. And we are one. Within the finance department, we pay all invoices for the city, so every penny that goes out comes through the finance department. We create, track and close out all purchase orders. We receive all monies coming to the city, so every penny that comes in also goes through our department. We track the grants received. We are the customer service for all utilities. We create new utilities accounts and we close old accounts. We start and finish all business license applications and renewals. We create the annual budget. We track all spending within the city. We comply with the auditors to complete our annual audits. We track and pay all bonds. We are the payroll for the entire city biweekly, and we pay all taxes for the city. That's the broad stuff we do. This is our team revenue. Um, we call them the fishbowl because you only see them from behind the glass. So within that department, we have um Angel Suarez is our revenue manager, Anna Lewis Morales is our customer service supervisor. We have our Christina is our customer, our finance collections. We have Pauline, Marie Cruz, Luis and Vicente, who are all finance revenue specialists. Vicente also um focuses on our ambulance billing. That's the new position that we created in January. Then we have our A P and payroll side. We have Sergio who runs the mouse. Now, he's also my finance accounting manager. Maria is our senior accountant over payroll. Um, Michelle is our senior accountant over A P. Francisco is our finance accountant. Sessi is our finance service specialist for payroll, and Dominic is our finance service specialist in A P. So overall, for our budget, our budget has decreased. We've had no capital requests. Our payroll increased because of the one position that was approved by council in January. And our only real increase was in our uniforms, I'm asking for a little bit more so that I can make them all look nice wearing uniforms. And total years with the city for the finance department is a hundred and nineteen and counting for fourteen people. We're at a hundred and nineteen years. And that's the overall finance department. Okay. So, like I mentioned in our budget, um, the only real increase that I'm asking for is just in our uniforms. I'm asking for a little bit more. I would like them to have like a a nice sweater or blazer or vest, so if they do have to go out and do things for the city, other places, they would have a nice just rather than just a polo, they could have something nice to wear on top. We're asking for no capital this year. Um, so overall, our budget did decrease slightly. Are there any questions on our budget?
I do, of course. Um, a couple of things. So just keep in mind with the uniforms, that became a big issue, right? And now you're asking for three thousand five hundred increase in uniforms. Okay, um, not a question, it's just a statement. And then my other question is, if I look at your payroll schedules, you're asking for a couple of increases, right? For some positions?
So we are not asking for those. Those are their steps that they get for their years of experience.
Okay, so we'll have a discussion about that later.
Sure.
Okay, because we have been giving um increases for the last few years and some huge increases, talking about eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve thousand dollar when, you know, we're, we we need to um talk a little bit about how that works. I know you guys always reference the the study that was done a few years ago, but I'm worried about the bottom quartile. I mean, if you notice, you know, how about these, I looked at their previous salaries and wages from twenty 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 two, and then you have them right here, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. You look at the bottom quartile, they have, they're not getting a penny increase. Okay, so I I would like an explanation why they don't fit into this model that you're using, you know? And yet we get uh increases for three other people, including yourself, of a thousand dollars. So I would like to talk a little bit about la- that later.
Okay.
Uh, when it's when the mayor allows for that type of discussion.
Okay.
Okay, cause I I I believe that um that if we're gonna give a raise, we're gonna give to all the employees across the board. And I've been saying that for a couple of years, you know, I don't think it's fair for the bottom quartile to get, you know, a little more than a couple hundred dollars, and some of the bottom quartile people get thousands of dollars of increases. And so, I mean, you say the 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 budget's healthy and so forth, but well, let let's look uh at how we're giving these raises. Thank you.
Any other questions on finance?
Yes, I have.
Go ahead.
I know that you have ninety thousand dollars for the accounting audit and financial. Uh, what's the other fi- professional service that we utilize?
Can you? Okay. He's gonna pull it up so we can actually see exactly what we spend, but a lot of those are fees for the credit cards. But he's gonna pull it up for us. Then we can actually all see the same thing. Okay, so all of the A M B, the bill services, those are the monthlies that we the city takes on for every credit card that's used in the city. So when somebody comes in and pays their water bill with their credit card, that five, six percent, that's what we pay, and it's all under all of those. And then the billing for the ambulance services that we have to pay monthly, that also comes out of this one.
But what, why does it go in under finance department if it's got to do with the ambulance?
I guess it always has. That's a good discussion we can have, yeah. It's a very good discussion to have. It's always been placed there because it's a financial number. So finance has always taken on.
But it's like finance keep doing the service for ambulance.
Right. We'll have that conversation, sir. Cause I agree.
And the the other line items is uh other contractual services?
Do you know your credit card?
Yes.
Right? People come to Lino, they pay, uh, what do they pay?
Hundred bucks, yeah, water.
Right? We don't charge for the credit card that's paying that.
Right.
Back to the water sewer.
We do not.
Like we don't charge the tire department back for their services to collect the money.
Yeah.
Finance isn't billed that way. Some internal services that's.
So on here you'll see well, and that's what I kinda meant was when, like, when somebody makes a payment out here, we we take that entire charge. The kiosks that we have, we pay a monthly fee for the kiosks. That's included in this amount here um for the other contractual. Any other monthly bank card fees come from here also. Our bank card fees are quite, they're large. We have a lot of people who pay with credit cards. A lot of people don't choose to use checks anymore. Um, it's a lot of credit card fees. And finance has always taken on that burden of taking that payment. Yes.
What is, what is, what percentage does a city pay for every swipe of the card? Is it like a two point three or or?
So there's a percentage that goes from the bank. There's a percentage that goes from the third party, which is the party that runs the card. So, we end up, it's about 5% total. Isn't it?
That's high.
Like 5% or 6% total.
That's high.
Between all the different companies that get their little percentage. We use a third party so that we do not have all the credit card information here. We do not keep anybody's credit card information because we don't want that responsibility. I don't want to keep anybody's personal information. So, we've always taken on those fees. We've never turned it back over to the community to grade. If you're going to use your credit card, it's an extra 2%. We've never done that.
Well, I think that we should discuss, you know, options that we have with the city's bank and see, because if we just go straight to the bank, it'd probably be probably a 2.1, right? 2.2%? So, I mean, because I really think 5% is, it's kind of high.
So, why do we have two line items covering the same, the same expense?
The ones for the billing. And this was credit card.
Oh, so that one's for the billing?
The other professional services for that, and then the billing and billing that they offer.
Oh, oh, you're right. Okay. It says billing, so I thought it was our, the other professional services are the ambulance billings, and then the amount that we pay monthly to the party who sends out our utility bills. The other contractual services is where all of our credit card fees are. I'm sorry. I apologize for that.
Okay.
That's why Sergio's here. He corrects me.
What's the cost on the kiosk, Jeanne? So, where's it? Do people pay through the kiosk?
Some pay through the kiosks. When our systems happen to be down in here, we walk people out there and we teach them how to use it. They do use it on the weekends a lot. Or if they run in at 5:05 and we've already shut, we use it. I think it could get more community education. I think more people would probably use them. They are very easy to use. I find it very, very easy to use. It's in English and Spanish, so it's not like, you know, you're not going to understand what they're saying. But a lot of people like to come inside, simply because they like the person-on-person communication. There's also one over at Public Works, so we have two in the city. I know that one gets you some. This one over here gets used more.
And they both have the same purpose?
Yes.
Jeanne, when people pay online, do we absorb that fee too, or does it go to the consumer?
We pay.
So, all these fees that we're paying for are cost of doing business, and they could be allocated to the water department, the sewer department. It's easier to go through finance, because otherwise we'd have a harder time tracking them, so I don't think we need to move them from what we're doing. Just got to make sure we're going to the right place. Thank you.
So, as I know that you guys contract a company to send out the billings, like you said. Have you, when has that been implemented since years ago?
Years ago.
Years ago.
Years ago.
Have you ever looked if it's more efficient to do it in-house, or is it more efficient to do it outside?
If we would do it in-house, we would probably have to hire another person just to do the billing.
What?
We'll have to lease a bigger machine for males.
Oh, okay. How much does that cost to do that yearly, exactly, to?
For that company?
For that company.
No, 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 for the company.
The company that does the billings. Okay, can you, can you get that number back, Jeanne?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Any more questions, finance? Thank you, Jeanne.
Let's move on to human resources. And I know that she has a presentation also.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So, human resource, human resources is a small department, but nonetheless with a lot of work. So, our human resources department is made up of four. Two specialists, one receptionist, and myself. As you see, the City of Nogales Human Resources Department provides support and is a business partner to city leadership and employees in the following areas. Talent acquisition, which is recruitment. We have a summer youth program. Employee relations, classification and compensation, trainings, employee recognition, educational assistance, risk management, administration of leave, and other policies. As discipline, we have a volunteer program that we started this year. We work with finance, with payroll, workers' comp, the employee rights, like family medical leave, retirement, and drop program. Very close with the city and EBT audits. We have a new archive system that we started this year as well. We do annual reportings as requested, and we do participate in career fairs. And then as far as the employee benefits, we're part of the programs, the retirement, the life insurance, and health. We do the health fairs, the clinics. We have an updated and upgraded employee assistance program, and as well as the wellness program. So, this is, this is a summary of the HR's budget for the past three years. There's no big change. One change is the addition of an updated compensation study. It was mentioned in previous council meetings that to look into every five years, an updating that study, and that's the biggest change. And here, it's the same information in the chart. Other than that, it's significantly the same. Just a few highlights. This past year, we've updated some policies, as well as job descriptions, reclassifications. The past two years, we've worked on the implementation of the comp study. Our HR archive system, recognition awards, which we have annually, you know, our annual trainings. We did a few more career fairs this year with the schools and the Arizona at Work and the county. As far as the employee benefits, we do the fair, the immunization clinic, and this past year there was increased benefits under dental and vision. And I know that there's talk on possible more benefits coming up this new year. Thank you.
All the recruitment services come out of human resources? When looking for employees, searching for employees?
So, I do have an item for advertising, yes.
And why is the city manager search out of the city manager instead of human resources?
That was a request done years back by council.
I have a question. Here in other contractual services, it increased from five?
Thank you.
On, under contractual services, it increased from 5,000 to 35,000. What does it cover?
Yes, that's the only one change, the major change. That would be if we move forward with the updated compensation.
Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, a couple of questions. As a human resources director, can you explain how how employees get raises? And I know that different factors play into, like, years of service, and stipends, and all of that. Can you explain all that? Because again, your department, three people are getting raises. And I have no problem with people getting raises, but if we're going to give, tell me why them and not other people in the lower quartile are not getting raises?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, on the first phase of the compensation study, we made sure that everybody went up to the minimum of the new salary ranges that were approved. The second phase, part one, was to separate the new employees from the employees that had a more tenure here, years of service. So, there was a calculation made based on dividing and making sure that we make it equitable for the years of service up to 10 years. Why 10 years? Because that was the average of an employee that has been here. Between the minimum of years and the minimum of the salary range to the midpoint. So, for the first 10 years, an employee will receive a 1% raise based on that comp study.
So, for the years of experience, if one employee moves to another department, are the years of service added, or are they included? Are you taking that into consideration?
Definitely. They go with you. They don't stay with that position. So, let's say, for example, if an ex-employee is promoted to another position, right? At the minimum of that range, we add their years of service. So, it's recalculated, I'm sorry, with that new salary range.
Okay, so, is it fair to say that every employee at the City of Nogales has received those years of experience when they either are are moved to a different position with a different pay, increase or decrease? Not a decrease. It wouldn't take a job that's going to be decreased in salary, but is that fair to say that every employee has received those years of experience and take it into the calculation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have a question. One of the biggest, I think, where we got criticized a lot was these huge increase pay raise with the directors, you know, we had a few with 10,000 or something like that. Let's just say that we would have another raise for our employees. Would these directors be also be getting another huge raise like that also? Because I think that, you know, like Councilwoman Montier is pointing out, sometimes it just looks like the little guy doesn't get to go, doesn't move a lot, but then we have the directors, which I'm okay with them getting a raise, but it just seems that the gap is way, way, way too big. You know, we go from 10 grand to maybe a couple hundred dollars. So, would that always be the same? In theory, in theory, you know, I'm just.
Depends, obviously, as I understand previously Mr. Kissinger has pointed that out. One, it has to do with, obviously, your position, two, with your years of service, and then what category you're part of. But yes, do we use the same calculation for everybody? Yes.
But of course, a director that's earning thousands of dollars, I mean, the math, of course, they're going to get a higher increase. We know that. It's logical. But as a council, as I'm only one voice, though, to be able to decrease that gap, I mean, you know, and we're not even going to go back to, you know, do you have a degree, or you don't have a degree, and all that stuff, you know? I just feel that the discrepancy between someone that is working and, you know, an honorable job, like, you know, in the streets and picking up our trash and all that, I mean, the discrepancy is so wide. And so, I believe, in my opinion, is that, you know, we do, we look at this study. I mean, I wasn't here when that was adopted, but we look at the study because it looks like the ones that really are earning these thousands of dollars. I mean, we've got people that got salary increases last year, and they're adding another thousand, $2,000 to their salary. We have some employees that are getting 6,000, 4,000, $5,000. This, they're in our budget because they're reclassifying and all of that. So, I know those decisions are made by you and the city manager and whoever's making the recommendation in terms of the director. But I would like to take a look at that, Mayor, later on, because the people in Nogales are are wondering about and talking about that huge gap. So, I know we always reference conveniently to the study, to the study. We need to take a look at that study. Thank you.
And my question to add to that is, you know, as I saw also on the, on these reclassifications. Okay, you know, you're in the same department. Now, you're not the secretary, you're doing a little bit of other administration. But who justifies or who says it's not 2,000, it's not 3,000, it's 6,000, it's 8,000, it's 15,000? Where is that? Who comes out with that number?
Okay, so, it's not as a request, I want this, and this is how much we're going to pay. It's not that simple or clear. So, when, when a director approaches us with a possible change or reclassification or whatnot, the first step is that, you know, they justify it. They'll send a request to say, we think that they're working more than, than what this job description has. So, then we initiate a case per se or research. What I do is I reach out to all entities and within the state. I have a group, and then they'll send their, what they have as far as job descriptions, similar. We compare. So, we start there, and then, and then sometimes we sit with the director to make sure that, you know, we're filling in these gaps, that is it, is it really that they're doing more, or does it fit in what their duties are? So, that's where we start. And then after that, we also get a comparison of all the salary ranges that are brought forward, and that helps. So, it's not something that somebody's.
You know, there's some departments that, you know, again, you know, the comment that has been made is, you know, why just one guy getting 15,000 or 8,000? You know, share the wealth. They all, I think it's, it's the logical thing to do, and yes, you know, there's, there's some department workers or that emphasize in getting better and getting a better salary and stuff like that, and others that are happy as is. You know, but I think, you know, I'm a believer of sharing the wealth. But, you know, how can we make it so everybody gets, you know, a little bit more and not just one guy, because that's where we get the complaints. That's where we get the complaints, you know, why one guy? Why? Well, obviously, you know, we all got a earful, you know, why just the directors, you know? Directors thousands and the hard workers pennies. You know, $5, $10 raises that, that came out in their checks, you know, where directors have thousands of dollars added on to their checks.
Yeah, I think the issue is that we're going off of an old compensation study that we used for raises last year, and still, we weren't able to get everybody to the midpoint of what is going around across the state. So, we lag behind most municipalities our size and comparable to what we do. We're not paying our employees what the midpoint would be at this point. We try to bring them up to midpoint, and that's where the classification of these positions came up to. I was opposed to it, but that's why I pushed for a minimum wage for the lowest-paid employees, and we got that through. So, we got to take a look at a new compensation study and look into it a little more, so it'll be more equitable. But we got to realize, we're going off of an old compensation study, and we're not even up to par. So, it looks optically really bad, but even our top directors aren't making what most directors in their field are making in the state.
Montier, go ahead.
You see, that's the rationale we keep using, and, and, you know, everyone's entitled to their opinion, but Nogales, we need to compare apples to apples, and we need to see the size of the municipality, we need to do, see all of that. I mean, you have a community that is, is poor relatively, based on the statistics here in Santa Cruz County, Nogales. And here we are, you know, we haven't, I'm sure we haven't taken those factors into consideration. I like to look at that study and really do some comparing, because Nogales is a smaller community, and it has other factors that we know out there that contribute to these raises. that um contribute to these raises and and so forth. So um, you know, yeah, I I would I would like to, and going back to a question, how long was that? How long have you used that study to determine who gets a raise and who doesn't?
Uh, well, we implemented in twenty fiscal year twenty one.
Twenty what?
Twenty one.
Twenty twenty one?
Twenty two. And then this year, we're working on the third part of it.
And it has three, three steps to it?
Yes.
Okay, so in twenty twenty three, so we're still, people are going to get some more raises?
Well, everything that-
Because we're not twenty-
Is already um averaged or inputted for this coming-
Oh, so we're done with a study?
No, 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 not done with this. Oh, you're you're, okay, maybe I misunderstood the question. You're asking about the study as a whole, right?
Yeah, when when do we complete that study? When is that study not going to be used anymore to determine salary increases?
Well, that's why we're recommending an updated one.
Okay, so that's why that money is, that figure is there. So with the same company, with the same uh-
So for now, um, since they have our information, it it was recommended to keep, we can do uh and go out and see other companies. Um, what happens in this case is since they have the majority of our information as far as job descriptions and things like that, with the classification part of it, it's a very much reduced rate.
Well, yeah, there's million, there's so many companies out there. We don't have to go with the same one. That information's all in the computers. We can send all that. And um, so, yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I'm I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr.
Yes, uh, on the compensation study, does it say what Nogales is compared to?
Yes.
Like uh, Changor or?
Yes, initially, yes, everybody, uh, we were given the list of what other entities we were compared and the specific jobs as well.
I I have a question.
Go ahead.
When there's, when raises uh occur, who explains it to the employees? How they're gonna, how they're gonna get the raise? Because I I've had a few, actually a lot of employees kind of me and ask me, when when are we getting the 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 third or the fourth or? And why did he get so much and this and that? And and I think it just causes, and I and I referred him to you or I sent him to the director, but who who really isn't, who really explains it away to the employees?
So what we've done for the past four years, and keep in mind, this has been three years, um, I personally visited every department to explain what's we we've we've been working on. And then after every budget, I go back and explain what has happened to every department. Obviously, if somebody's not there or if they have follow-up questions afterwards, we're obviously-
Senator Mr. Mayor, I was the council.
Give me an opportunity to work with staff and and we'll come back with the uh options, I guess, for lack of a better word. Uh, I can tell you that I believe in a good, healthy and safe working environment. I want to create a career path for every employee in the city where there's personal and professional growth. Me being an example, I started here as an explorer at fourteen years old. And um, you know, we just attended, we just attended a summit. And uh, there's bigger and better things coming to Nogales as far as to trades and education and stuff like that. You know, I believe that uh the professional growth and personal growth is something that that we can provide all these employees with opportunities for for the future. You know, uh, we ourselves, however, need to make sure that we motivate these employees. Some employees are not self-motivated. I'm not saying either right or wrong or indifferent. I'm just saying that we all need to make sure that we invest in our future. I didn't have a degree. I didn't have a lot of things that 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 I had, but there's uh, I took the bull from the horns every time there was an opportunity. And I think that's a message I want to send to every employee that there's there's possibilities as long as they are willing to accept that responsibility and accountability. So that's what I'm working towards and and just uh give them an opportunity to work with staff, directors, and uh and we'll we'll get this done.
Yeah, that's nice to hear, um, that you're going to give all the employees an opportunity for self-growth and staff development. Um, and sometimes, you know, um, some employees, even though they they say they they're informed and so forth, but, you know, we hear them saying that they they don't know about these opportunities like staff development. I would like something, you know, or maybe it already has happened where they get it in their check, where, you know, encouraging them to take classes, encouraging them that, you know, there there's this policy that the city has that you can go back and take some classes and stuff. Because I I've talked to a few employees that they don't know about it. So, you know, we, you know, sometimes they don't know about it, they don't know about it, but maybe they don't really know about it. So I'm really glad and elated to hear that you're you're going to start working on that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Duh.
Uh, I'm just wondering uh on the suggestion Councilwoman Montiel made of the other, there's other companies and is this something that's going to fall on directly on your lap, uh? Mr. Redwoods?
I need to check with HR, with staff to make sure that we um work on a timeline. And then we'll discuss, but for sure, we'll bring it back to you so you guys can make a decision and be informed.
Might not be the same. We might have to increase it if we go with an-
The only thing, yeah, with a with a different company is that they would have to build the foundation of employees and job descriptions and go out and and compare. Uh, this one is just uh an updated version of it. And then we'll take it from there.
But hopefully with uh better results.
I think the results, yeah, I think better for who?
Well, we're we're talking about the mostly the lower echelon that that uh, you know, it's taking time for them to get those uh the pay raises which will bring them uh kind of uh to that medium. And and I guess there's other uh things that would probably, you'd probably want to look into, but but yes, uh, maybe you can also keep us posted on that. And and then when when you all decide, well, we'll we'll take a look at it.
My my understanding is that this comp study and these uh adjustments were made with a with a an old uh study. So what we're looking at is updating and, believe me, I I plan on being the conduit of information and communication between council and staff. So you will be notified of every step that we're taking.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any any other questions for human resource? Thank you very much. Go ahead, uh, Jane, continue.
So next is our P and Z, our community development. We do not have a PowerPoint presentation because Mr. Tapia just started. So we 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 let him off the hook.
He had a day.
Well, before anything, uh, council, uh, we've seen him on 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 the video. Uh, I I met him uh on on Monday and uh, you know, this is Mr. Tapia. Uh, welcome to Nogales.
Yeah, thank you.
He walked in and I said, here's your budget book for food.
I was mine in the morning.
Oh, yes. So if you look at their budget, there's not, again, a lot of changes. You will see that it has dropped overall. They are asking for one item of capital, which is a touchscreen um monitor so that when plans come in, rather than print them and blow them up and then make correction and then reprint them, they can magically do it on a screen that everybody can see. So overall, it will save in time and efficiency for their screen.
That's correct.
And I only know that because it was explained to me.
That would be added where?
Yeah. So um, are there any questions overall on this budget?
The last, the the last side.
That's that's the equipment, six thousand, twenty two?
Yes, that's their one screen.
Thing I have is on the code revision. It went from twelve thousand down to five thousand. A year today, we're only at one thousand. Is it because we don't have a code enforcement officer or?
No, that's my my comment that I need to do myself too because um the uh development code is very important for the city, especially in the department planning and zoning. And I was told that I start that revision uh last couple of years, but it was never completed. And I was able to see that I have in the last fiscal year twelve thousand dollars for the revision, even though that should not be enough. But in this year, it's only five thousand and but it was not actually used from last year. But we need to continue working on this implementation because he, the code has like twenty years old. And it's very critical for us that they're doing the plan reviews uh and the zoning resonations that we had the latest information to provide for the customers. Easy to read, easy to understand and be able to put them in a website. Like uh the uh, the plan review on the screens is one of the elements of the whole thing because we need to do electronic plan reviews to eliminate paper as well. But this uh, the update of the development code is critical for the city. It's twenty years old and uh it's really outdated. Even ten years ago, when I was here, we were using, it was ten years old, it was still old. But now I think uh my recommendation would be to to continue with the implementation of this plan. That's not enough to do an update, but it would be something that I can use to to start working again on this update. Typically, those kind of revisions cost like uh between sixty to seventy five thousand dollars. That's the average that I see in other places.
But you would, would that be in increments of three years, five years, uh, or how do you say it, Mr.?
No, typically, it should be done in one fiscal year to do the 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 complete uh update, not uh different fiscal years.
So what number would you like me to put in there?
I mean, it would be mayor, vice mayor and council members. I think uh it's your call, but I mean, for me, it would be like seventy five thousand dollars to be able to have a quality development code for for the city of Nogales.
Ask and you shall receive, I guess.
Yeah, I don't look at you, Mr. Put me up like that. I'm just, I want to make sure I get the right numbers. And I know that we haven't had a chance to sit and talk about your budget, so this is the first time we've been able to talk to.
So do you think that you'll be able to do this in in one year?
One fiscal year.
One fiscal year?
Of course, we need to uh interview consultants. We have quite a very good qualified consultants from Tucson and Phoenix. They do this on their daily basis, so I'm very familiar. Even we have a previous company here, Maria. She was, she was doing the the general plan. It was completed already. But we had a general plan that the guidelines for the city.
Yeah.
The future for the future. Now the implementation thought, I mean, the code is to implement the general plan. Implement the vision of the city and the uh approval by city council and verified by the citizens of Nogales.
So would, you just talked about uh talking to other consulting firms, would we have to pay them?
Not during the discussion, the interviews, but they will give you a proposal and that will be presented to city council before it's approved. They will come in and present what they're supposed to do, you know, the recommendations. And we can bring one or two companies, the top companies selected, and then they will present to city council. This is what we propose for to update the development code.
In lieu of revising the code, we're working on outdated codes. So the liability would be more than seventy five thousand dollars if anything were to go wrong. And they're not asking for any capital, so I I think that's a good number and we should really look hard at that. Uh, it's a critical element of that department.
It is very important.
Now, Mr. Tapia, is the, is that item the one and only you see man besides the the equipment that that you you're looking at? Uh, or is there something else that you've you would suggest?
Yeah, basically, I I was able to review the the whole budget for this year. And uh the training, I saw the training that everybody recall for the uh building division because they have to have certifications. Right now, they have only residential inspection certifications and they need to have also the commercial certifications. So it's very important for for our staff to have that certification. And we have right now the training, we have a five thousand. Um, and I talked to my staff uh yesterday and they feel like it's enough because they they already asked about the cost of the trainings. But I think the commercial uh certification, that's a little more extensive than the residential part. And that's very important for the city as well, to have a a city staff certified as commercial inspections and plan review.
Do we do the commercial inspection or or does Cali does?
According to what I was told, they do, but they don't have a certification yet. They're still working on it.
And is the five thousand dollars enough or is it needs to be increased also for training?
I will prepare ten thousand to be able to have it uh very qualified uh training.
Okay.
Besides that, Mayor, that's the only items uh the path for me. The development code update is the most critical for the city.
Yes. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Montiel.
I'm sure, Mr. Tapia, you know about the talks that are going on about collaborating with the county?
Yes, I was told some information.
Okay, I'm sure the city manager will have a talk with you about it. And and I I wonder how that plays a role into all of this. I know there's different codes. The city uses different codes than the county. I'm not an expert in that area, but I was just wondering if you you know about those talks going on, right? Nothing is for sure, but we did have a meeting already.
Yeah, thank you for that because I was going to comment too because um the county, the county level has a different state regulations requirements than the city. So to merchant by uh doing the same kind of uh plan reviews and inspections, they they do have a different requirement than the city. So I'm not sure how we create like a one-stop shop to be on one location, that would be great. It's just that different regulations are different, but for the county and for the cities, by state law.
So i- in in investing in that amount of seventy five thousand or whatever, might be even more, is is okay with them? We're not investing in something that might change later on because we're collab, we're going to be collaborating with the county? See, I'm not an expert in areas, so you tell me.
Yeah, the development code is only for the city.
Okay, so that's why that's needed?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I know they're different, but I was just wondering if we don't spend, they don't, we're just making good use of the seventy five thousand dollars, okay?
Because the county, the county uh areas, they go by the county regulations and they may have their own development code.
Okay.
It don't match the city of uh Nogales.
How do you feel about the collaboration?
I mean, um, that I work in other places, we always call, work with them.
Work together?
Either way.
Yeah, great.
When I was here ten years ago, I was working with them too.
Oh, great, good, great. That's good to hear.
Something very important I didn't mention because uh
Yeah, go ahead.
We have a software called Asela Permit Tracking System. And what I did in other places is to link our permit software with a county assessor's office. Every time you create a new permit, then you bring the data from the county. You don't have to type it anymore. You just bring the data and be able to create a permit by the parcel information, evaluation information, then you are already working with a county link. And before I left last time, I was working with them to create a link.
Well, that's really nice to hear that that you're 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 looking forward to that collaboration.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sure the builders and residents will be really uh happy about that, streamlining everything. Thank you.
Very much.
Mr. Mayor, I was the council. Um, I had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Tapia on Monday when he started, Monday afternoon. And um, actually about about the merger. And uh, we're we're looking at, we're going to get together with Mr. Frank Dillon and and obviously see the possibilities. But what he's talking more about is is the co-location versus a merger because they do have different requirements. You know, one of the things that I want to push on it because, you know, looking from the outside in, we always get these complaints that from businesses that it takes too long to get permits, it takes too long to get things approved and and it's almost impossible to start businesses in Nogales. Uh, so I'm going to work really closely with Mr. Tapia to make sure that we change that perception and that image of our city.
Mayor, uh, may I just last comment?
Yes, sir.
About economic development, um, because um typically, community development deals with economic development and it's pretty normal. and it's pretty normal, the planning process, being the license, and the building department, we work together like that. But also, um, I don't know, I would like to hear from you also about what you think about economic, economic development for the city.
Do you have a question?
I was just about to ask that question. I know that last year, uh, on the, on the budget, your position was, uh, Planning and Zoning Director. And then, uh, this year it's changed to, uh, Community Development Director. So, uh, the question not for Mr. Tapia, but how do you calculate the salary? Is that the same thing, uh, Community Development Director and Planning and Zoning Directors, are those?
The same thing.
The same responsibilities? So, so when you.
Salary range.
So the same salary range on the, uh, all right, that was my question.
Thank you.
Reimbursement is not the same thing as the training and you can't use that to get their certification.
No, that's what's cool.
So we need, I think we need to add more to the training because we need certifications for these, for the employees. Last year was nine thousand, they've spent about two thousand. Uh, Mr. Tapia's thinking he needs to go more.
He just mentioned ten.
Yeah, ten thousand.
So after large, there's not going to be no more money, so.
And Mr. Tapia, uh, on the community development, um, basically that's, you know, that's the goal of, of you and us and working with the city and the county, um, you know, to see how we can work it out, um, you know. We've always talked about, you know, why both entities have, uh, you know, one or a person each, each, uh, entity and why not combine that.
Yeah.
Those are our thoughts of, uh, of working together and, uh, and, you know, cost sharing I GAs and stuff like that, that, that we can do with, uh, each other. You know, we're working on the parks and, and other, um, entities to, to collaborate on, on working together.
That would be great.
But yes, uh, you know, hopefully, uh, you'll be brought up to date on, you know, the, the ideas that we have. Yes, now, work, a lot of work to do, uh, you know, downtown, um, with, uh, the mining industry is coming big in, 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 in our vicinity here with Patagonia having a, the new mine, uh, developing. I don't know if you heard about it, but, you know, uh, you know, batteries, uh, semiconductors, uh, you know, uh, job training, working, you know, workforce, uh, all that is, um, you know, we're, we're trying to push to have it here in locally, uh, you know, and for me, you know, if it's city, it's better. But if it's county, it's close enough. You know, we, we're trying to avoid all these companies having to go Tucson, you know, Casa Grande's, uh, Phoenix area where the raw materials are going to be closer here. You know, so, uh, that's where we're trying to work together and make it work here. So, you know, I think, um, there's been, uh, some meetings, uh, workforce, on the workforces.
Yes.
You know, but whatever you, you, uh, come about in, in, in your position, I think, uh, Mr. Redmore is a straight-out, open person. Feel free to, uh, work with him and, and, and myself, uh, if needed, uh. But, um, you know, improvement, we need, we need to improve our, our, you know, our codes. We need to improve our, the way we, we work with our community, with, um, with our businesses and everything. You know, I'm, I'm big in Little League and I got a rulebook and I bend it, but don't break it. And I think that a lot of times we could do that.
I like to do.
You know, you know, there's no reason why you can't extend a day or, or a month or five months on, on certain development or certain things so long as you're not breaking the rule. And that's, that's always been my philosophy to how to, how to work with people, you know, bend, but don't break. Um, and, and, but be flexible, be, uh, you know, uh, open to the people and, you know, so long as you tell them, okay, I'm going to give you to that, this other date or whatever, but let's, let's work with everybody. So everybody's, um, on, on a good, on the good page and, and try to work, uh, to get better.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. That's about, number one goal for me is, is customer service.
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody else with, uh, go ahead, Ms. Montiel?
I noticed, um, in your budget, and I'm looking over, it's one of the questions I have, um, the tuition reimbursement. You're allocated four thousand dollars and I notice every department is different. So that, I know it's an HR question, but I'll go back to asking later at the end of the retreat. What do you use, why are you allocating four thousand or there? Tell me the types of thing, what do you mean by tuition reimbursement? Are they classes that your employees will take and there, there's a lot of, how many employees do you have?
There are.
Under you that can take advantage of that tuition?
Five, five.
Five? So how do you go about choosing which employees take advantage of that? If all five want to take classes and how many, I mean, do you, which one is first come, first served or how do you?
No, well, basically what I did just in the last couple of days is to meet with them and ask that question. What's your future goals, development as a person and also your education? For me, education is very critical for the city employees and I asked that question last couple of days. And I believe that they met with Jeanne before and they mentioned classes. But I mean, for me it would be us to continue pushing men to develop themselves in education and training. But training will be for the work and the division for professional growth. And classes that they mentioned before, I think to, to finance, that four thousand, they come up with a number.
So this tuition reimbursement, um, is, it has to apply to what they're doing, that, that work.
Yeah.
It's not for a job they're looking in the future for, well, I'm going to get trained because it's a job that I'm looking. So it has to be related to their area.
Yes.
Of what they're, they're doing right now, for example.
Yeah, like administration will be, uh, part of the, um, building safety, for example. They will administer the, the division of building safety. So if Jesus Presia would like to have a, an administration class to continue with his master's degree, then that would be applicable for that area.
Okay.
If, uh, uh, another employee is working in a planning technician or building technician, he, he would like to learn about G I S, for example, Geographic Information System. Uh, he would like to learn as part of his job and then that would be something that a class can be taken that away too.
And the reason I'm asking, these are public funds, so, and college is expensive and you have to afford the opportunity to all the employees. But I notice in every budget that the tuition reimbursement is different. So, um, so that's a question for manager later on, how, you know, how do you determine that and who gets that opportunity? Because if I go to the U of A, if I'm an employee and I want to go to the U of A and take classes, I mean, do I take one or two class? I mean, I would take advantage of it knowing, assuming that I know about it. But if there's a couple of employees under that department and it's only four thousand dollars, it's not going far, assuming everybody's wanting to take the class.
Right, there, there's, uh, mayor?
Go ahead.
Cosmo Montiel, Cosmo woman, I'm sorry.
Whatever.
There's policy behind that and it's a four thousand dollar limit per employee. Uh, H R, Human Resources puts out a notice, uh, citywide, anybody that's interested in, uh, taking advantage of it. Uh, I can tell you, um, there's some people that do, some people that don't, which is the, the fluctuation of amounts. And then some people are going to junior college, others are going to universities. So that's the reason why most, some are more expensive than the others. But the opportunity is, is given to everybody. Again, like, like I mentioned earlier, I think we need to go out there and, and make sure that, that, uh, all employees reiterate that, uh, that opportunity is, is for everybody and, and make sure that they take advantage of it. So that's a reason and fluctuation, but we have policy, uh, Human Resources puts out a notice and there's a deadline of April first every year, March?
April first, no sooner than March first.
Right, so, so there's a window for you to put in for, for, uh, tuition reimbursement. Then you have to come back with what university, what classes you're taking and, and so on and so forth. And, and which is the reason behind the fluctuation of amounts.
And I, I understand the policy and that's why I got up real quick to look it up. But there again, it's budgeted, it's budgeted differently in every department. So who makes a determination of, okay, well, you know, finance will get five thousand tuition reimbursement and another department, well, well, it's different.
The, the employee makes the decision.
I realize that, how do you base that amount in every department?
Anybody who turns in their application to H R. H R meets with them, H R gets all their information, H R gives us the numbers and says, like, there's four thousand for this one person in P and Z. There's eight thousand, that's for two different people because they've each asked for four thousand because the top that each person can ask for is four thousand per year. So then they say, okay, P D has eight thousand total, P and Z has four thousand, um, city manager has twenty-two hundred. It all depends on what is turned into H R and then that is what's given to us and then that's what we put in the budget.
Okay, so it's based on what is submitted, what employees submit? Okay, so if employees know about this opportunity, then they'll, they'll think, okay, I can take a class here and whatever, and they submit it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's say they run out of money in that budget and you still have other employees that are interested. How do you go about that? Yeah, you can.
Can I?
Yeah, great.
Well, um, the, 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 the policy was created, uh, with those deadlines so that we could budget for those requests. And, and if I remember correctly, the, the budget, uh, once the employee makes that request for budgeting purposes, then it's, it's included in the budget pursuant to, to the manual.
To the manual, okay.
But there's also safeguards too, because the problem was what if twenty employees request it? And then they don't follow through? If they do that and don't follow through, then there's sanctions to be applied to them. Not, not monetary, but they're not, they can't apply next year, for example. Because i- it's not fair to, to budget it, uh, other things in the budget then won't be included and then they decide without good reason not to take advantage of it. So it's, it's that process. By a certain deadline they apply, uh, it has to meet certain requirements under the policy. And then they take the classes, uh, certain minimum grades are, are, are acceptable, uh, only acceptable. And then they get reimbursed. And as long as they meet all those requirements, they can keep, keep on applying until they get their degree. I think it's only a degree, right? Uh, and, and I think postgraduate degrees are not included.
So it's just a B A?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, that's right. In your area. The, the, the undergraduate degree, the idea being that whatever area the employee wishes to get educated in is a benefit for us, it just, the more educated, the better the employee, right? But that's for undergrad. Once you get to that point, then the policy decision was made that anything over that has to be for something in, in your area, like, like, for example, in planning, zoning, you go to the masters, it would, they would have to be working there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else for Mr. Tapia, Plaid and Zoning? Thank you, Mr. Tapia. Dean, continue, please.
Okay, next we have the city clerks' budget. You will see that this budget overall went down. Most of that is because of the other professional services. Every time that we have elections, all of the election, um, expenses come from this budget. So that's where the other professional services was at fifty thousand and we've reduced it down to ten. And every time we have an election, it goes back up to cover all the expenses. That'd be anything that comes from the county regarding, um, primary elections, general elections and so forth. Are there any questions on this budget?
That also includes on the advertising?
Yes.
Same reason?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Okay. How do you feel, Letty? You agree with your budget? Okay, so on, on travel, you think we should increase from a thousand? Another thousand on travel?
Yeah, we are the safe side because then we got the legal cities and then the elections and, and, uh, city clerks' training, it's not until the end of the summer. So I don't know the price yet because of the hotel and everything and that.
Okay, so basically on travel, on travel because of concerns of, uh, conferences and, and trainings, we'll, we'll put it up to two thousand or twenty-five hundred?
Two thousand.
Two thousand?
Any other concerns, Ms. Letty? Any other concerns? Goes up and down. Does anybody have any questions or concerns for Ms. Letty's budget?
Okay, thank you, next.
So next is M I S and Jose should be walking in the door any moment. He said he was listening so he could come.
Do you want to go to City Attorney?
No, I think I just saw him walk by. He's the only one in his department today, so he has to be over there to monitor. There he is. You want to start with your presentation?
Yeah, I'm going to start with that. In my department, we have, uh, three employees. Currently we're down to two, um, but we're advertising, uh, the city, uh, M I S technician. So we're just, uh, hopefully we'll be interviewing soon. So here's some of our roles and responsibilities. Network and system administration, uh, this involves managing the organization's network infrastructure, servers and other systems, including hardware and software maintenance, updates and troubleshooting. That includes like two hundred and thirty computers, a bunch of, uh, over a hundred cell phones, the, the network equipment, that, that type of stuff. We also manage the, the data management and security. The M I S departments, um, are, M I S departments are responsible for the organization's data security, including implementing security measures to protect data, protect data from breaches, viruses and other threats as well as ensuring that data is backed up and recoverable in case of disaster. And, um, so that's one of our main things is security, security. The, the chief is always, uh, saying that our, our internet's very locked down and, uh, we're trying to find a happy medium there. Um, but that's, that's real important, uh, and, and having a disaster recovery is, is real important. Another, uh, the user, user support and training. The M I S department provides technical support to users, helps resolve technical issues and provides training to users on how to u- use various software and hardware. I, I T project management, the M I S departments are often responsible for managing I T projects, including planning, budgeting and overseeing the implementation of new technology and solutions. And, uh, research and development, M I S departments are responsible for researching and testing new technologies to ensure the organization remains up to date and secure. And so these are some of our main expenditures that you'll see on our budget. Support contracts is big, it always goes up. Um, we have to have, uh, uh, maintenance contracts for our software, Spillman, which is our, uh, the, the police software. That's, that's about almost seventy thousand. Incode is up to about sixty-seven thousand and just every year, and I, Incode when I started, uh, well, when we, we started with Incode in oh-six, it was like thirty thousand. That's how much it's increased, it's more than doubled. So that, that's a big part of our, our budget. Uh, a lot of the, 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 um, software as a service or SaaS is, um, is what's happening now is that you don't really buy the software anymore, they lease it to you or they kind of. is what's happening now is that you don't really buy the software anymore. They lease it to you, or they kind of, it's a subscription-based, and that's why, like, uh, Google Apps is a good example of that, where we don't actually own the software, we just, uh, subscribe to, to the, and the, for the licenses. And then the other big one is our capital projects. Right now, we're asking for, um, we always ask for replacing the core network equipment, uh, routers, switches, that type of stuff. We're in a five-year rotation, so that it's always, no, none of our equipment is more than five years old. We have, uh, because it goes, um, end of life, and then we don't have, we won't be able to, to have support on it anymore. So we're doing that. Um, and the other thing that I was asking for was, uh, and I was talking to Mr. Tapia about it last, um, yesterday, was, uh, replacing, possibly replacing the planning and zoning software. So it, we'll be able to do more stuff online, whether it is going to a, a new system or, uh, fully implementing Acela, which he mentioned earlier. And, um, any questions?
One question on, you know, you, you mentioned the, on the capital, on the bottom, uh, capital expenses. Why you dropping it to ninety-four, uh, everything's going up?
I'm sorry? Oh.
Yeah, but.
It went down? Yeah. And again, I have a.
I saw it on the back, that you have two.
Yeah, a five-year, um, replacement, and so this year, we're only replacing, uh, several, uh, some switches and, uh, some UPSs or, uh, the battery packs is what we're replacing. So it's, it's just less this year.
Okay.
So there'll be, there'll be years where it's more expensive when I replace the, the host servers or, or some of the main routers and stuff. Those are more expensive. And that's what we did last, last year, I believe. Yeah. Yeah, so. And I, I think inside the, um, other contractual services, we also have the, uh, an upgrade to Incode ten. We're about forty-seven thousand, somewhere around there. So.
Okay.
It'll fluctuate. Jose, the reason for the two thousand dollars less in salary, is that because it's an entry position? As opposed to somebody that was here? Julian left, or, um, and so. But is that the difference? I believe that's, that's the difference, a couple thousand.
As explained, uh, chief, normally, they go back to the minimum, minimum, uh, salary range that, that they, they put, correct, chief? That, that's where they, the, the number comes, uh, different. Yes, sir.
So that number would be a, a moving target. Uh, that's just for budgeted purposes. It, it, it's really gonna depend on who's selected for that position. If it's an internal candidate, it might be more than just the minimum because they take their years of service with them. But, uh, this for budget purposes, when it's a vacancy, we budget at, at the minimum.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Montiel.
Jose, um, you're talking about Acela. Uh, but it not, do you know how much that would? You have a, a price range on that?
How much the Acela?
Yes.
Well, we're not real sure if we decide to stay with Acela, and we're not real sure. But I know that the software, one of the softwares I was looking at that would give us all the online components that we were looking at and would tie into the current Incode system or, um, ERP Pro, is what it's called now. Um, it's around forty thousand is, so that's why I requested the forty thousand.
Oh, okay.
But, and again, we, um, we didn't have a, a planning and zoning director at the time, so I, I talked to him right away and see what he wants. Because we actually implemented Acela when he came in, uh, ten years, almost ten years ago. So it's up to him what he wants to do.
Any other questions for IT? Thank you, Jose. Thank you.
I didn't understand anything you said. The computer works and that's it.
Okay, so next we have the city attorney's budget. And he doesn't have a, a PowerPoint presentation either. So if you look at his budget, he is asking for some new desks for his office, for the, for the ladies out in the, the main office. They're quite old. Um, do you have any questions for our city attorney? Or do you have any comments on your budget before they start?
I, yeah, I have a question here. Um, on cell phones and telephone, you have seventeen hundred and, and, and fifty bucks there, uh, for the two separate line amps. We don't have any cell phones or anything in our office.
According to also MIS, he's the one that sets up the cellphone services for. But I think, isn't there like, uh, we have a Wi-Fi or anything?
We have a Wi-Fi there. Is that what it is?
That's part of it, yes.
Oh, okay.
We can always check for you to make sure to see what that is.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
That's fine.
Yeah, we go by what our list is given to us.
I, I've made adjustments in there, but I've tried to, to, to keep, uh, within what was there last year. Uh, the only big thing that I'm asking for right now is, is the, uh, that desk, uh, desk for the, they haven't been upgraded and, you know, they're on top of each other, and, and that's about it. Um, everything else is fine in there.
Mr. Machado, um, you're also asking for, uh, employee salary increases.
Yes, I am, I know. What, what I've done in those is, um, I have two attorneys who have twenty-plus years of experience, both of them. Um, I've increased, uh, their time, and I've increased what they have to do in the office. They, they were separated before civil and criminal. Um, they are now doing both, and they're, I've increased their time. Um, and, uh, and, and that's what I, that's, that's the reason I've done it. We're, we've, uh, increased our collection efforts. We have a lot of litigation now as a result of that for the business license, the tax license. We've got the sewer license. Uh, we are in the process, um, at Mr. Garedees' suggestion, to try to work something out with, uh, with Viverda Water Company to try and, uh, get, uh, the sewer collection bills, uh, even to a higher rate. Uh, but the increase has been, uh, mostly in, in the enforcement of the business license, which the finance has, has been spear here, it has spearheaded it. And so as a result of that, in that process, planning and zoning gets involved, and they issue citations for, um, as part of the, of the, of the process for the business license, they have to have a, a, an inspection of the premises, and that has resulted in some additional litigation. Um, we have also been taking over litigation that has been, um, historically given to our insurance company. And so now we're in the process of taking all of that stuff back. Uh, I sent, I think I've sent everyone an email regarding a reimbursement that we got from the insurance pool because of that. And the less we send over to them, and the less we can do in-house, hopefully that, that'll even increase on, on that. So that's the reasons, uh, Mrs. Montiel, that I've asked for, for that.
So these two raises for these two attorneys, um, are they gonna be working full-time?
Not quite, not quite.
Can you tell me a little?
I've got them up to about three-quarters each now.
Three-quarters?
Yeah.
Why? If you're increasing their workload.
Because.
Why aren't you increasing their hours?
They were hired at, at part-time, at halftime, and I've got them up to, to three-quarters time. Uh, because again, because of the increased, uh, the increased, uh, uh, caseload.
And I, you know, and I respect what you do, and attorneys, I know a little bit about the hard work you guys put into, uh, this. It's not easy. Um, but, you know, it's hard for me there again with the raises of employees, the inequities, you know? Um, they're not working full-time, uh, like you said, you know? But yet you're increasing their workload, so like, they're, I, I just, um, wanna make sure that I'm clear about that, that.
No, I understand that, and, and.
I'm sure you do. You're smart.
No, I mean, and it's only fair, I justify what I require.
Exactly.
Right. Um, i- if I were to go to full-time, one of the attorneys for, and number one is a contract employee.
I, I realize that, yeah.
And so he doesn't get any benefits at all.
Yeah.
I- if I were to make him a full-time employee, uh, I, I, his, his salary would be much more than the, than the ninety-eight, but on top of that would be approximately, what, thirty-five percent of all the, uh, employee, ERA's employee-related expenses. So that would increase it, increase it much more. Um, the same thing with, uh, with, uh, the other attorney. If I were to go full-time on that, again, based on, on experience and, and, and background, I'd have to increase it even, even more so. Um, I, it's my judgment that, that doing it in the way that I'm doing is, is I'm getting a whole lot more with a whole lot less. And, and what I've tried to do, um, is restore the confidence in the office. As you know, I've, we've, we've tried to respond to people as quickly as possible. Um, we try to be more responsive to the, to the police department. We've, um, tried to identify problems that we've had with, with the city court procedure and so on, and, and we've addressed those. We've undertaken more representation. Um, we've, we've, we've tried to, um, get more, more involved in, in the actual enforcement with, along with, with financing. Um, so I, 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 I just, I justify it and, and, and honestly justify it just because of the increased caseload we have and what I'm getting out of them in comparison to what we're paying them.
And I, I understa- yeah, you, you, you have a good rationale. Um, the only issue I have is, um, is, you know, getting an increase when you don't work full-time, you know, like other employees, you know, it's the, going back to the equity. I, I understand your rationale. You could be more efficient, working, you know, less hours, like, uh, you know, um, very competent attorneys, but it's going back to the pay raises and other employees aren't. So that, we'll just leave it at that. Thank you, though.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, Mr. Machado. You have three legal secretaries, and one of them is getting a much, much lower salary. Are they, she works less, or?
No, ma'am. She's brand-new.
Oh, it's a brand-new?
Yes, we're training her, and she's coming along great. Um, so in time that she'll move up on that compensation study. Yes, she, we expect her to move up, but yes, she's great, but she's just brand-new.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Trump.
No, 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 we, we've, yeah, we're gonna stay right with it. That's why when we got together, I tried to keep within what had already been budgeted.
And you're asking for a sliding?
Uh, in, in, in that area, but there's also decreases in other areas. Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yes, uh, yeah, for example, uh, the way I calculate, there's, there's roughly twenty-six thousand dollars that are in, that are, uh, go to the salaries and all that stuff. Um, but, uh, I've decreased in other areas another ten thousand, for example. So the actual increase is much less.
Okay, Dean, just one question.
Yes, sir.
And this, you have the, you know, the secretary of desk, uh, as other contractual service? I know, I'm wrong?
The desks are under the capital equipment, which is on the second page, so if you flip it once.
Okay, okay. I couldn't find it. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Montiel.
Um, Joe, where do the outside attorneys, where does that come from? Where's that budget?
Where, where's that budget?
Yeah, I see ten thousand there.
It's, uh, other professional service.
The ten thousand that you're allocating?
No, no, no. No, she's talking about outside attorneys.
Outside attorneys.
Yeah, it comes under where it says professional services.
Ten thousand.
Okay, we, we have, we have legal there for, uh, it's twenty-four-five. And then the others, other professional services, ten thousand, that's, uh, process servers, uh, court reporters, uh, anything related to the actual litigation.
Okay.
And, and that one, I put down ten thousand. I'm not sure we'll get there, but because of the increased litigation that we're handling, you know?
You know attorneys. You know attorneys.
Uh, but for example, court reporters, depositions and stuff.
They're expensive.
All that'll come out of that.
Okay. And, and so the twenty-four thousand five hundred, that is to pay for legal when you reach an outside attorney?
If we need outside expertise on a matter, that's where it'll come out.
Okay.
Okay, but, but that doesn't, how can I say, that's only in cases, historically, everything's been handled by the pool, right?
Yes, exactly.
So that, that has, all that's gonna come back, and our office will be able to handle that. But in handling all this stuff, if there's something that we need expertise on that we can't have here, it'll come out of there.
So for example, you know, pending lawsuits, that you're not an expert, your office is not an expert in it, then you hire an outside attorney, and that's where it's coming from, the twenty-four thousand.
Well, no, not so much an outside attorney, but say we need a specific part of the litigation that we're handling. We need somebody to, um, give us present values regarding certain damages, for example. That's just an example.
Yeah.
And, and then that would come out of that.
Okay.
Okay, but we would, hopefully, my plan is that we should handle, like we did before, almost ninety-nine percent of what comes out of this.
Yeah, you have experts in there with a lot of experience, okay? And that's why you're wanting to raise your salaries.
Exactly.
So you could do things in-house.
Right.
Not be paying hourly rates.
Exactly.
Rates to these attorneys that charge thousands of dollars. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, go ahead, uh, Vice President.
Just for clarification, I know that you're currently being paid a hundred forty-four thousand, right? It's not a hundred twenty-one?
No, that was the previous attorney.
Yeah, because, you know.
So that, that was the increase in that budget.
Right, right.
Okay, so. All right, thank you.
Yeah, that was already the contracted price that, uh, prior administration had given them, and, and that's why that changes. Okay, any other questions? Okay, uh, apparently I've been notified, uh, Mr. Garedees', uh, lunch is here before we spend our money. So, so, uh, we'll take, we'll take a break and, uh, recover, recover in at one o'clock. All right? Thank you. All right? Thank you.
Welcome, please. We'd like to reconvene our study workshop on budget. Budget workshop for 2020, 2023, 24. Okay, Ms. Jean, would you continue? I think we got City Court.
Sure, absolutely. We have City Court up next. They do have a PowerPoint presentation. And the judge is here to fill us in on his court.
So, good afternoon.
Just like that.
Just done. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The municipal court in the City of Nogales, we handle all of the court staff. This is Eduardo Rojas. He's our senior clerk. He's been with us just under seven years. Mara Lopez, she's our court administrator, and she's been with us almost five and a half. This is Kadija Morales. She's my judicial assistant. She sits with me on the bench, and she's amazing. I can't say enough of what good she is. I mean, she's been with us just over one and a half years. Gabby is one of our clerks. We've got three clerks. She's been with us for one and a half years as well. For customer service, I would say she's our star there. Mata always tells everybody in our office that people have to be at court. It's not their favorite place to be. It's not where they would choose to be. But since they've got to be there, customer service has got to be like number one. And Gabby really embodies that. This is Manuel Rosas. He's another of our clerks. He's been with us just under one and a half years. And that's me. I've been here now one year. This month marks a year for me being here. And we have Aline, who's been with us seven months. She just graduated off of, what's that, probation? And has been a good addition to our staff. And this is what our work family was up until very recently. This is in the courtroom. Next one. We just added Renee Correa, security officer. He started on Monday. Due to some savings that we had for our lack of security officer for quite some time, we were able to add him before this budget cycle because we had saved that amount. We just need him to be continued on. But he's going to make a very great presence for security in our office. We have him do sweeps of the building beforehand. He's outside and working. There was one thing we didn't think about in our budget. And when we get to the numbers, I want to talk about it, that I may need to adjust one of our figures for the budget. So what we do, we are, as I said, we're involved with customers, with people that don't want to be here, but they've got to be here. And that's one of our top priorities. We handle our city code violations. Everything that council has approved is what we ought to be handling. We do those traffic, excuse me, parking tickets, animal ordinance type of things. We see a lot of that. Handle on the criminal side misdemeanors and petty offenses. We don't handle any of the families. So everything that I can do is with jail time, that's going to be less than a year. Class one misdemeanor's maximum possible penalty is six months in jail. And I don't see jail as a great alternative for people if they can do things otherwise. We collect fines and fees. Money comes into the court and money leaves from the court. We are all responsible for the money that comes through our hands. And there are lots and lots of checks and balances to make sure that nothing goes wrong there. I do orders of protection. One of the hearings I just did right now was I had to leave to do, to handle an order of protection. They had filed an injunction against harassment. Their child had been in school and kind of was coaxed into the bathroom and then assaulted there on video. And apparently it's going through social media. And so horrible things can happen, but those are the types of things that we interface with the public on. Got case management, lots and lots of old cases, lots of new cases, and lots of cases that we'd like to get closed. And so a lot of our time is spent on getting our cases worked. I handle weddings. We do one, once a month, free weddings for anybody that wants to come and get married. They have to get their license first, but one day every month, and it's Friday. One Friday a month, I do free weddings. And we do that at the municipal court. A year ago, I was told that we were going to be moving, and it was going to be somewhere else. And I've come to terms with, you know what? This is where we're going to be. And I'm really happy. We are in one of the most beautiful places. My view from that bench out the windows is to this park that we have. And it's lovely and maintained. And people come to get pictures taken there and to hang out. And so I'm enjoying the place that we are at now. And since we're there, and I'm not holding off anymore, we have some other projects that we'd like to get done. So some of the things, we've got a problem with our flooring. Some of the things in the flooring is dangerous for the public in the courtroom and again in our offices as well. And that's just an up-close look. And that's in our office. We've put some white tape over it to keep our floors from tripping there. But you'll see the request for that, not in our capital expenditures, but in the facilities on page 64. I want to bring it up because it's important to me, even though it's somewhere else. We're also, so that, so those are our, the estimates that we got for the reception and office space flooring to be done and then the courtroom to be done. And we would be taking out the carpeting and having, I think it's linoleum tile. It's going to be basic, but it'll be safe and easy to clean and good on allergies as well. We're also updating our technology so that we can start doing virtual hearings. The Supreme Court has asked that we have more and more virtual hearings. During the pandemic, the City of Nogales made some adjustments so that our defendants could stand outside, and we could see them, and they'd be on the phone, and we'd have our hearings that way. We are now going to update and use some of our fill-the-gap funds. It's not in this part of the budget, but it's in a different part where we have budgeted funds for rural courts like Nogales City Court to fill that gap between what our court is and what the large cities and the large county courts are like. We don't have a whole lot of funds, but those funds are for things like this. And I've got a quote for that, just under $50,000. And that's going to be installing cameras and microphone devices. The JAVs system that we already have is what records our hearings and keeps our record. It's no longer capable of being updated. The computer is too old, and so that had to be done anyway. But as a part of our updating JAVs, we're returning it into a virtual court so that we can have more hearings virtually, and people can show up via Zoom or other virtual platforms. So we've identified the funds. We were looking at grants. We have one possible grant that we're applying for. And we'll see what that goes. We have our funds if we don't get the grant outside. So that, we've already talked about the new court security guard position. All of that is the information that we've talked about. So that's what we've got going in the municipal court right now. I have Manuel and Eduardo, two of our clerks. I didn't talk about while we were talking about who we are. They're actually attorneys from Mexico. They just, they haven't passed the bar here. They can't, they'd have to go to law school and whatever. But they're actual attorneys, and so we're really lucky to have them. I didn't think about uniform for our new security guard because when we contracted with security guards before, they came with their uniforms already. And so I haven't included what we believe we're going to need for that is $2,300. We currently have four uniforms for our office, $1,500 a year. And so that would bring that requested amount to $3,800.
So that'd be 23 extra?
Yeah, 23 extra to make it $3,800 total. The vest itself, I think, is like $800 for a bulletproof vest. And some of that stuff gets really expensive. He'll be outside while we're located where we are. There's no space for him in our lobby. I don't know if you can call it a lobby, our phone booth of a reception area. So that's what we're dealing with right now. Any questions from any member of the council?
Right there.
Judge, on here, on line item 65-10, you have accounting audit, financial. You had $7,500 for the current budget, and you spent $7,500. But yet you have zero for this coming year.
Every three years, we have to be audited. It was our turn last year. And so we won't have that expense this coming budget year.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else question?
Where's the "that was easy" button?
On contractual services, on the bottom line, 99, 6899, you had 30, and I know you used 5,600. But is $5,000 enough, sir?
So most of that was our security officer. He was under other contractual services. When our last security officer, who we contracted with for that, he went to work for one of the other agencies. He stopped working for us. He wanted to work full-time here. So that's why that's not a need anymore. There still will be a need for that extra $5,000 for other contractual services. There may be times when we need to contract for somebody on a very temporary basis for when our security officer is out.
So that's where the 30, almost 30,000 goes on top of the regular place?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jean, next item.
Yes, next up is library. Library does have a presentation. And if you'll notice, our book this year is all about the 100 years in the library.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. And I just want to start off with, we have 100 years in the books. And the first and third picture are the library storefront, which used to be, if I'm not mistaken, where Wells Fargo is right now. So it says Public Library. And that middle one is the current library, which that building has been, was inaugurated in 1962. So we've been in that building for 60 years. And it's the Nogales Santa Cruz County Public Library. And thanks to the IGA, it is paid half and half through the city and the county. What started off as a donation from the Women's Club for $200 has increased now to a budget with seven full-time staff members at all four libraries, two part-time clerks at the branch libraries, and three part-time tutors. So it has gone, so it has increased quite considerably in 100 years. So it has gone, so it has increased quite considerably in a hundred years. If we could go to the next slide. And I just wanted to point out the kickoff event that we had, thanks to the other professional services that were approved last year. We were able to, um, do the kickoff event on March third, I believe. And, um, staff worked really hard and they were able to get some of the history and most of you were, were there and were able to look at the library directors, the library employees. And I will just read them off from left to right. We have Victor Grijalba, who's the current team service coordinators, Sandra Mascareñas, who's interlibrary loan, Denise Ortega, who is the senior librarian, myself, Laura Rodriguez, who's the children's coordinator, she coordinates the programs for all four libraries, Clarissa Martinez, who's the Rio Rico library assistant, Karina Martinez, who's the cataloger, she catalogs all the books that come in, all the materials, all, all the DVDs, and Luis Oviedo, who's the Rio Rico clerk. And I just wanted, um, to point out just a hundred years, it's just for the community. And we've, I think the libraries progressed quite a bit, the libraries in general. And in the other picture, we also have Mayor Maldonado, also woman Montiel, members of the board, Chairman Varona and Ann Don, and a local author, Maritza Lynn. And I just wanted to point out that we've, um, since COVID, changed our library services completely. We have come back in the past year and we are, we, the library, I think, the staff has gone to over forty outreach programs just this past year throughout the county. Up top at the, where it says Nogales Library, that's Karina and that's Laura, at the Desert Shadows Middle School Career Fair last year. Down here at the bottom was our Easter Egg Hunt last year. Up there at the top was our first event last year again, in person, we had a Dr. Seuss Read-A-Thon event and the kids, um, had a really fun time breaking the piñata. And down here we have the Sonoda Elgin Fire, Fire District showing, um, the kids at the Sonoda Library, the importance of fire safety. And just to continue on, at the bottom, we have, um, we had a full house for our Halloween events. And it was a free event to the public, they got free food, we had, um, games, activities for the teens, the adults and the children. Over here on the, oh, if you could go back. Down here is the NHS Drama Club, they came and did, um, a play for us in December for the families. And up top we have, um, we had a Harry Potter event. So there's a, a patron who was dressed up as Harry Potter. And then the Ponosopolis family also, um, from the Children's Museum, they lent us the dinosaur. And there you can see my little niece with one of the dinosaurs. And just so you know, we do have, just this past year, we did have a hundred and two programs just at the Nogales Library with eight hundred and ninety-three people in attendance. The Rio Rico Library also saw the, their programs grow. We have two staff members there, so one is able to take care of the desk and another person is planning in the programs. And if you can see up here, we had an event for the, with the movie Coco for November and the kids made their own little guitars. And that event was a really, was the first one and it was a really good success. And we've had also other activities, Valentine's Day, Christmas, if it's not bi-weekly, it is monthly events at Rio Rico. And we do have now thirty-nine programs with three hundred and twenty-eight in attendance. And that's the movie when they were watching Coco and making their little guitar. And the Toubac Library is also, has also had an increase in programming. We've had twenty-one programs from the local pot school and storytime. We've had ninety-six kids in attendance. And, um, there's a few needs there and those will be talked about later, but just so you can see that, um, the programming is going really well. And our Toubac clerk, Bailey Garcia, is right up there. And the Sonoda Library is, we're working out with the county, it's gonna, the building's gonna be expanded, so we need new, new furniture and shelves. This is a whole new programming for the Sonoda Library. We never had children before in that library, it was a different crowd. And now with a new library clerk, we are having children, families, homeschoolers and different, different businesses that are donating materials to. So that's fourteen programs and eighty-seven in attendance at the Sonoda Library. And I am asking for the part-time clerk position at the Toubac Library to be a full-time library assistant, because right now currently that, her, her pay is from SGIA, which is the state grants in aid and it's set at twenty-five thousand. Unfortunately, it doesn't go up because the size of the county hasn't gone up, so price stays the same. And since the minimum wage has gone up, that, those three positions, I need to move that one out in order to not go over the grant, right? For capital expenses, I'm asking for the entrance of the library to be replaced. So it would be the epoxy floor replacement, cause right now it's been multicolored and it's also like a little slippery for people and it's cracked. If we would get the, so yeah, those are the two, the two colors, and it's been like that for over forty years. And if you could go to the next slide, oh, I didn't, well, I didn't have the picture on there, but it would be like, the whole epoxy would be like, it looked like wood, wood flooring and it's under, it would be under forty thousand dollars. And also the two last AC machines need to be replaced for the main library, one has already given, it's not working anymore. And I know I did this a little bit before, but we did have National Library Week at the end of April. And we had different programs at the different libraries. And I wanna say that the police came by, they did a storytime. Staff from, um, Waste Management, Waste Collection here at the library came by and they showed the kids how to use a garbage truck. And they read to them too, so that was great. Uh, we continue to have Lego Time, the summer reading program is gonna start next week. A program that I found really interesting that we didn't know we were gonna have a success with was the teens coming into the library. And we let them paint the windows, if you stop by the library, you will see that the big windows are all painted. And the teens came by and they all did their own little artwork and it was great. And just so you know, our year in review, it's not as high as it was before COVID, but it's getting up there. We did have thirty-eight thousand four hundred and eleven visits at all four libraries. We had a total of seventy-two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven checkouts. There are twenty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-five cardholders. We did have over fourteen thousand computer sessions, a hundred and thirty-six programs and over thirty-five hundred children and families in attendance. And upcoming, we do wanna keep doing the, the community celebrations. We did the one in Rio Rico, we still have the big community event, Nogales, that we wanna do in October. One in Toubac and one in Sonoda. We do wanna keep doing more outreach events with the mobile library and the school superintendent's office and just keep doing more outreach and more programming. Any questions?
Thank you, um, one, one question and more over here to, um, on the, I know we combine expenses with the county on, on library. On the facility, you know, uh, there's, in our facility, uh, changes and stuff like that, there's nothing can hurt because of the IGA with the county, that's why they're not up here or?
If you, if you just turn one page, right, there's the capital for the library. So all of the capital for the library is included in the IGA except for capital to the main building in Nogales. Everything else within the, the library budget is what is part of the IGA. So the, the furniture and shelves for the Sonoda Library, um, anything that would deal with Sonoda, Toubac, Rio Rico would be included in the IGA, it's just the main building that's not.
And, but with, in our facilities, we don't have nothing for the library?
No, because it's all under the library.
But you just said that, not, nothing for the main building?
The main building is the epoxy floor, the replacing the men's restroom sewer traps and the two ACs. So everything that Denisa has asked for is these four items right here. So there's nothing under facilities for the library, it's under the library.
Okay. Okay.
Could I mention two more things really quick?
Go ahead.
We're in the process of implementing the Act One Culture Pass, which is gonna have, um, those are gonna be free passes for any library cardholder to a museum in the state, any museum in the state, any art museum, culture institution, and that's gonna be happening in the next month. So if somebody comes in with their library card, they can get free passes. And also, I know this is last minute, but I was just talking to, um, the Maniposa Community Health Clinic and the National Library of Medicine, and they're wanting to do, give us a health grant where we're gonna be having telehealth classes or health talks at the different libraries. We're still working out the proposal, but that grant could be up to sixty-five thousand.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Gradias?
Twenty-five thousand for two heater, two AC heaters, is that sufficient, is that gonna be enough?
Yes.
Okay, um, on, on your special events, I see you doubled, doubled the amount. What special, you know, are you planning to do more events?
Yes, the community, we wanna do, um, the library board and the Centennial Committee are talking, are in talks about making a big community carnival in October. We're looking at October fifth right now from three to seven and we would have different activities, local authors, face painting, music, we'll bring back the mariachi, we'll have a local DJ, we'll have a reading, I think dress up as your favorite reading character. And we just wanna, that's for that one, and I know Sonoda is also planning something during September and Labor Day. And Toubac wants to do like an art walk in the community center, so those are, that's for that. Oh, and there's a time capsule too that the chairman requested from the library board.
Okay, anybody else? Now, thank, thank you for all you do, you know, it's a, it's a great job that you guys do for the kids and, you know, all around this, uh, the county, you know, it's, uh, it's a privilege to have, uh, you know, people like you guys, uh, dedicating, um, the education and wellbeing of, of the kids. But, um, I'm good, I'm good, uh, I'm glad you're making, doing more events. Again, and this is something that I got for future, but my, my hard thing is how do we get announcements of all the events out there? You know, I think, uh, it's something that I'll bring up, uh, to add to the budget. How do we, uh, you know, do we put a sign somewhere, electronic signs at both borders or whatever? But we need to, um, get our events, uh, publicized or, or announced so everybody knows what's going on. You know, the worst thing is we always get, oh, I didn't know. But, um, thank you for enforcing on making more events. Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Montiel.
Hi, Denisa, um, I, I go and visit the library quite often, sometimes by myself, right? And I just wanna commend you and your staff, because I see all the activities firsthand that go on. You always have something going on every month. And, um, I like your outreach between the different entities, like the police department's really involved there. And I really appreciate that and I think the community does too, and it shows and how active you are out in the community. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Mija.
Thank you.
Next we got, uh, police. Mr. Jimenez.
First of all, good afternoon, mayor, council and people in attendance. Also, thank you for, for lunch, it was really good. I'm intended actually really happy about that, so, fully read that. I have a thirty-minute presentation that Jean wanted me to cut down to two minutes.
I gave, I gave you three.
So this is a snapshot of what the police department does, uh, for the community. And there's obviously a lot more that we do, but we just captured some highlights, uh, that we, you know, do when we do our community outreach. The first few pages is really what the police department, uh, core goals are. So you see the first, uh, slide here, we talked, what we're gonna discuss is our mission statement, our vision statement. I'm not gonna get into reading all these, but you can see that we have a mission statement, we have a vision statement, and then we also have our philosophy and our goals. And at the end of the day, all these things all come down to our core services that we do for the community. But we are the voice of the victims of the Nogales, city of Nogales, so whatever, the, you know, the committee needs, we're there for them as their voice, you know, as their advocates and everything. But, um, next slide. We do have some community outreach programs, like I said, it's just a snapshot of many things we do. The next slide will, we see that we have what we call Coffee with the Cop, if you're not familiar with that. We do visit different locations throughout the year and have, uh, simple, no agenda, no speeches, just come and talk to the police officers and enjoy a cup of coffee or pastries, depending where it happens to be. This most recent one was at, at the Dunkin' Donuts. We also have, uh, what we call our Citizen Police Academy. Due to COVID, we did put it on pause for a few years, but that was the last one that graduated prior to COVID. Sorry, Jean, didn't make the, the picture for the most recent one that just finished last month. But you can see it's a way that we, uh, get to become more, more, more friends with the community. So we, you know, we got our support, they understand what being a police officer, being a communication officer and, and support staff in the police department is all about. And at the end of the day, they, they graduate and have, you know, better understand what the police department does. Next slide. We also have the, the several, uh, social media platforms that we reach out to the community. We, we talked to them about what's going on as far as like PSAs or events that are coming up or incidents that they need to be aware of, like for instance, there's a bad accident, stay away from this location. So those are the three platforms we use. We also went ahead and added a, a new notification, uh, in our customer service, um, approach. And this is called the, the P3 Tips app. It's something new that we're implementing, it's, it's a, it's an app in type of, of program that you put on your phone. So we know everybody has a phone, so if you wanna, uh, get information, there it is. It's new, we're just really getting it out there and we're informing the community how, how to use it. It's, it's, it's in its early stages, but we're seeing some success with it. Also in the customer service realm, we're also trying to digitalize and, and modernize and have all our new programs coming of age. You can see that a lot of our stuff that we used to do in person, COVID changed a lot of things, as you're all aware. We now do things digitally, online. We do offer ser, offer those services to the public, which is police office, uh, police records requests, digital fingerprints. The records oper, uh, rock, records operation, what basically means is we're digitalizing all our records. We're going from hard copies to now everything on digital, and that's also based off a cloud-based storage process. Here are a few department highlights that I'll, I'll touch a little base on. We have our public information officer and also one of our community resource offers, and that's Sergeant Mesta. He, he engages the media as when the chief is, is, uh, is busy and wants to relay some information. He's the one that's kind of the voice and face for the community, I mean, for the department to the community at times, depending on the incident, if it's a little bit higher scale, obviously, you know, the chief will, will step in there. We have a program that's very successful, which is the, our school resource officers and our day officers. You can see Officer Pimienta there is, is assigned to Nogales High School. Officer Calderon is at one of our middle schools. And Officer Duran is our day officer that visits all our elementary schools, their program. We also have, uh, two of our favorite police, uh, officers, which is K-9 Brahm and K-9 Donna. We just recently lost Officer Serrano to another agency, but we're in the works of getting a new K-9 officer to handle K-9 Donna. But, you know, they're a great outreach, you know, everybody loves, who doesn't like dogs, right? I don't know. But, uh, you can see that they're great, they're great for the community. I'm not gonna get into the proposed budget yet, I'll let Jean do that, but is there any questions on what we just talked about?
No, I think, uh, thank you, uh, what you guys do, Mr. Jimenez, and, you know, thank you all your officers for being out there and for securing our, our public. Basically, you know, I really enjoy how all your officers, um, co-mingle with, with the public and, and, you know, I've never seen one turn around and, and neglect, uh, anybody in the community. You, you guys do a great job. Anybody else have a question, comment? Ms. Jean, you have something?
The only thing that on their budget, you will see under their tuition reimbursement is zero, but there was one that was asked by us and- by us. And so that number will go to thirty six hundred for the tentative budget.
Okay.
Are there any questions for police on their budget?
Hi. Texts on the payroll, the overtime increased. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
On on the overtime, just a regular, you refer?
Yeah, the overtime regular.
Okay. Well, the overtime, if it's grouped in with our Stone Garden overtime.
Yeah.
So this year, we are carrying our current Stone Garden grant. We're also ready waiting for a Stone Garden grant that we also have approved. And we're also submitting for an additional Stone Garden grant. So the majority of of this overtime that's being proposed here is is what you would call the spending authority overtime. So the increase is is in a nutshell is is because of the overtime that refers to Stone Garden. There is another smaller grants that are our governor office highway safety grants, but they're in smaller scale. They're in the four, six, ten thousand realm. But the biggest one, there is just the spending authority for the overtime when it pertains to Stone Garden.
And so of course, you know, when you have this overtime, it affects the unfunded liability.
I'm sorry?
It affects the unfunded liability.
Have you referred to any overtime? Correct.
Yeah, that's the downfall of the Stone Garden.
That is correct.
So if you look at the pension retirement contribution, it's going up significantly. Yeah, I just want to note that. I I do you have a hard time finding officers instead of so much overtime? And I mean, I know.
I'm glad you asked that question.
Yeah.
I just informed.
You're glad I asked that?
Huh?
What?
I'm glad you asked that question because I just informed the chief that this morning that we just did receive a resignation for an officer and one of our records clerks. So it is a challenge to to bring on new officers, new stat support staff, whether it be records, clerks, communication office. And it's an ongoing challenge to keep them, you know, recruiting them is is a challenge and retaining them is even harder because they do see greener fields and other, you know, agencies. But to answer your question, we have implemented what's we call the split twelve eight shift. We used to work before Councilman Garías remembers, we used to work eight hour shifts prior. Then we went these last few years to a ten hour shift. And due to the manpower concerns that you're referring to, we actually now went into what's called the twelve eight split shift. Where an officer will work twelve hours, twelve hours, eight hours, eight hours, which, you know, accumulates to a forty hour work week. And we've seen some success. And the overtime that we used to spend during the ten hour shift has reduced has reduced been reduced dramatically, like at least eighty percent. So as we lose officers and we gain officers, we make those adjustments to make sure that we try to limit the overtime, whether it be regular shift supplemental overtime or other overtime with like city events and Stone Garden as to the minimum. But yes, you know, it is. It is something that does occur at times when we have no choice but to supplement our shifts.
Yeah, and I have another question on. There's a, I lost my just on the police, there is a on corporal on the salary pay schedule, schedule. There is a corporate position that has been decreased from fifty three to fifty one. Is there a reason for that? Uh huh, sure, go ahead. It's on the payroll schedules and it's the first page towards the bottom. It's corporal.
Where it says from fifty three to fifty one, you're referring?
Fifty three, eight, three, five to fifty one, twenty, sixty six, uh huh. Maybe it's.
What I can tell you without really getting too much into the the payroll with finance and H R.
It's a decrease, a significant decrease.
Well, what could have happened, I need to confirm with with.
It could be that that it was a vacant position in the building and it was it was budgeted back to.
What it was is Sergeant Bunting was a corporal and she became a sergeant. So you you referred back to the budgeted position?
So it's now a vacant position.
Which is vacancy, which we're currently going through a promotional process with one of our officers.
Okay, okay. And I have another question on the body cameras. Can you tell me a little bit about that? I know it's been Chief Vermeulen's on the wish list for a while.
What I can tell you.
I want to tell me a little bit about it.
What I can tell you, and I know the chief can also chime in a little bit if I miss some spots. This is a fifty percent reimbursable grant. So they're going to give us obviously the the fifty percent and we're asking the city to match it. It's not on a grant that's been approved yet. This is more for spending authority case. It does come in, we do have the funding available. And and body cameras is is something, technology that's been around a while. It's improving as we speak, but it's also rather costly when it comes to the storage of the video. But seeing that, you know, current events that are going on within not only our community, but nationwide, it is, it is a good program to have, not only for the officer, but also for the community, you know, because as the chief has mentioned in the past, you know, everybody videotapes us. Why aren't we videotaping ourselves, you know, and protecting ourselves from liability that, you know, we can make sure that, you know, we we earned the right. But yeah, this is a grant. If I remember correctly, chief, I think it was for a hundred thousand per year for for
Four years.
For four years. And so we're matching it with a fifty percent part of it.
Yeah. And and the reason I wanted you to talk a little bit about it is I know it's there is because, you know, there's a lot of talk out in the community that you you yourself has said, you know, if you had cameras, we, you know, we could defend ourselves in a better way, you know, in court or wherever. So, yeah, and so the other fifty percent is coming out of the general fund.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Berna.
Officer Jimenez, on the Stone Garden, am I correct? We do get a equipment, we do get vehicles, am I correct? Also, Stone Garden covers all E R Es, right? So if 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 it is overtime, the unfunded liability does not go all that much higher.
You know, I can't provide you with exact figures, but you are correct. The Stone Garden grants do cover equipment. And that equipment is under the approved equipment list with what could be his vehicles to something as simple as police radials. And that is costing for the city when it comes to purchasing that equipment. And and yes, the overtime is is completely reimbursed that includes E R Es. I can't give you exact numbers, but it it is a positive program because it does put more officers on the street that are out there. And they're not only officers that are doing Stone Garden. They're there, they're they're police officers first, and they're supporting the mission of of U S Border Patrol under Stone Garden. But first and foremost, they're there to protect the community regardless. They're not going to look away because they're on Stone Garden overtime. If a crime is committing committed over here, they're going to react. And, you know, maybe they'll become, you know, an officer on regular overtime for the city to support that incident.
Anybody else? Okay. At that, thank you, Mr. Jimenez.
Thank you.
So.
Put a raise in there for me.
Next up, we have fire.
Feel bad John lost his good chair. Good afternoon. Our presentation isn't very long. And so basically, this is what our objectives are for the coming year, what we've been working on. Excellent patient care. Enhancing what we do from a fire and rescue perspective. We have been focusing on department diversity, both male and female as well as other nationalities of hiring people. Kind of trying to build a more diverse group. We've been working pretty heavy on education and succession planning. So those to employee development. And then the last part is responsible growth, and that part is when it comes to the discussion about the safer grant that we need to chat about. So that's my first line. Right now, we've asked for an increase in the line item we got last year, we got fifty thousand towards fixing hydrants. We're asking for another hundred thousand this year on top of that. Essentially, we still have a lot of hydrants that need repair. Right now, about twenty one percent of the hydrants have something that are wrong with them. Some of them are as simple as maybe a cap, maybe fixing the stem. There's some of them we're never going to fix because there's a two inch main underneath them. And so those are just going to be what they are for the life until we get a water project to tear up the road and put in new main lines. But for the most part, we've spent all of that fifty thousand this year and have done a lot of the minor repairs. And we have two hydrant actual replacements slated for this next month to finish out that fifty thousand. So is a hundred and fifty thousand enough to solve all the hydrant problems? No. You could probably earmark a million dollars towards that, and we're still not going to get it all done because it's a perpetual problem that we see. And so what we're trying to do with last year was just figure out what does fifty thousand get us as far as repair this year go up a little more and then try to dial in a number that we can work with yearly to maintain the hydrants. So that's our plan on the hydrants. One of the things we want to get to is oh, man, I don't have the cost in there. That was a placeholder on the bottom down there. Until we figured out what the number was, but I'm sure it's somewhere in here because basically, we want to get to fifteen promoted paramedic positions. And that's one per vehicle per shift, one per engine, and then one for each of the three ambulances. So to get there, we have twelve positions now that are promoted medics. So this doesn't include like a captain who's got a medic or an engineer who's got a medic. So eighty six percent of our call volume is EMS. And right now, there's a huge shortage nationally of medics. So what we started two years ago was growing our own pretty aggressively and sending them to a class where we pull them off the truck for six months. And they go to a program and they become paramedics. It's a it's an investment of about thirty thousand dollars per between the cost of the class and the payroll per employee to get them up to a medic status. But if we have five per shift, we would have one for each of the three ambulances and then one for each of the engines. Like right now, if we do run low on ambulances, we're only getting B L S units from Rio Rico because of their medic shortage. So we want to convert three firefighter positions to medic. And then the other thing is goal two for the for the medics is we got an engineer position, we have a paramedic position. And they're both technically by the by their job description, second in command, should the captain need someone, okay? Eighty six percent of the calls are medics, medic related. They are making hundreds of hundreds of decisions per day that are life safety decisions and life changing decisions for patients. And yet they're not paid at the same pay grade as the engineers. Just to put this in perspective, to become an engineer, it's a like a forty hour class to become a paramedic, it's a six month class. Paramedics have to do annual training. There's a state requirement, and then there's also a national requirement, if you're in national registry, that you have to do a certain number of hours in continuing education per cert. And so what we're trying to do here is bring them up to the same level. So when we're saying an engineer and a paramedic, second in command, and they're paid at the same rate. A lot of departments do it different ways where they don't have a paramedic position at all. And it's just a stipend for everybody who's got a paramedic. We looked at that, but it did not fit with our current pay structure. It would require the stipend to be really, really large. And it would be a massive budget impact. So when we looked at this, there's, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Carmen, but between three and five thousand for most of the medics to get up to that is kind of what we looked at.
Most thirty five hundred.
Okay. So most thirty five hundred. And and I'm sorry about the X's on that. That was when we did the presentation, we didn't have the number yet, and then I completely did not remember. I didn't have it in there. So I'm sorry about that. And the next one. The safer grant. So there's this option to apply for a grant for firefighters and it's kind of close to the cops grant. I think from what I've heard in the presentations, they pay for the police officers for three years. And then after that, you're on the hook for the for the for the employee, the city is. It's the same thing here. If we wanted to apply for them, it's only for new new positions. And if we were a volunteer department, then it would be for like keeping them. But first of all, we have to figure out what our risk is. Then we have to show that we have a need, a financial need, that's how we get graded. And it's only for personnel costs. So some of the things in the capital line items are things we need, but also we would really need if we went for this safer grant. And there's a couple of different ways we could apply for it. And so any of them are a huge budget impact in three years. What I recommend is one of two options if we're considering it. One is the six firefighter model, which would put two firefighters over by the west Portish area. We would need some property or to rent something. That would be a great thing to basically decrease our response in that area. As far as times go, we have a an annual a biannual requirement to report our responses to the state for ambulances. And we are close to compliance, which is completely normal. But that's our target trouble area because regardless of which station we're at right now, the responses there are about eleven minutes, no matter where you get to, if you're going over to the Westport. It's either really slow down western and then dealing with, you know, the traffic after the roundabout, especially in the afternoon. If you've been over there, it gets crazy. Or coming all the way from Station Two down Mariposa to the to the roundabout and then the same problems. So the other one is if you wanted to, we could go with the fifteen firefighters, and that would be essentially five per shift to staff a ladder truck up to the NFPA recommended five. But that doesn't do anything for our geography. And that is, if you look at the number of employees, that is a really substantial jump in three years of having to pay payroll and the payroll related and pension things, which right now are over seventy percent. It's kind of what it looked like from the numbers. So that's just something to think about as we're moving forward. We 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 can apply this year. We wouldn't see the money till the next fiscal year. The so it's not really in the budget, but it's the topic of discussion of do we want to apply? Because it is a major undertaking to get there. And we have to commit it. The only downside is if you describe a risk and they don't fund it, then you've described a risk in public and then you're you're still on the hook to try to fix that risk. Which we know that we need to get better times over at the Westport entry or by the Westport anyway. And so we've been kind of working on that, but it does, that does kind of coincide along with the the safer grant. And that's it. And I do love spreadsheets. That's why I put the cup there. I I am a spreadsheet nerd.
Thank you. Anybody have questions?
I I have a question, chief.
Mr. Berna.
Thank you, mayor. I'm seeing here that we're you're asking to asking for money to be set aside each year for six years to cover costs of a future ladder truck purchase. But one of the discussions that I that I've had with you is could you, could you, could you tell Mayor and Council what the cost has been to maintain the ladder truck? I think last time we we discussed it was costing twenty, you had already.
It's about twenty grand a year just for maintenance. It's in right now for thirteen thousand dollar repair.
So the mile, the mile, the cost for mile is real, is real expensive because we don't have a maintenance program, in-house maintenance program. Am I correct, chief, in that?
Yeah, one of the things that that we need to look at, and we've talked with H R about this and and Public Works is and we literally had this conversation last Wednesday at the regional chiefs meeting is how do we get an E V T locally? Whether we do it as a J P A with all of the other people or we do it as an I G A, I guess, depending on how you write it, but. or whether we got a mechanic and contracted that out. But the consensus of all the chiefs is we need to do something about an E V T. So let's break it down really super fast. There's an A S C certified mechanics which repair most things. And then E V Ts are ones that work on emergency vehicles. And then there's all different kinds of E V T certifications. The highest level is the ones that are certified to work on the aerial apparatus like our ladder truck. We don't have one locally. They're super, super expensive. We had a roving one that we were using that we ended up having come down and would be here for like three days where he would bill us for his hotel and his time and he would do as much as he could. But it's it's a little bit different than working on like, let's say, it's the same mechanics of working on the water tender for the city Public Works folks, but it's different when it's on an engine because there's testing requirements and we have to do an annual pump test on it. And so they look for people who are certified specifically in that. So there's a million different options on how to get one. We could train one internally. We could contract with one. We could do a joint thing with our neighbors. It's just, how do we get there? Because right now the expense is covered under the hundred and fifty thousand we spend annually on repairs. Could that be used somewhere else? Could we take ten grand of that and put somebody through a class here locally and have them do that maintenance? There's there's a million different ways to handle it. But yeah, it's something. When the last city manager was here, we had a group meeting with Public Works, Mr. Kissinger, Alfonso was there and Alfonso was gathering some data and we just need to do a follow-up meeting. Kind of letting Roy get his feet underneath him and then although I do pester him a lot, but before we hit that one, but there's, we got to work towards it, but there's a bunch of options.
Okay, and I have one more question, chief. On the, I know we also discussed the issues with the fire hydrants. And and we did we did talk that probably a million dollars was probably a conservative number to fix all the fire hydrants. However, did you ask for just for the one hundred thousand because you're going to spend those one those one hundred thousand just this year or or you're just you didn't want to ask for more money or because I I think we need we need to fix this issue. This is our infrastructure. And every every it seems that every summer, you know, we have harsher droughts, you know, we have more fires. And we can't have any failures with these with these fire hydrants.
Yeah, and I think the answer to that is again, there's a bunch of different ways of solving it. And the hundred thousand at this point is, so some some of going over that amount would be hard because we have really old hydrants. And so sometimes getting parts takes a while. So like we've waited months to get parts. Also, there's questions of if we had that large dollar amount. Because one of the things is that the current vendor is doing the digging when it comes to putting in a new hydrant. So instead of just giving the money to that vendor, there's a there's a question of do we buy another backhoe and do we go through human resources and get a person qualified to use it and they do the digging? And then the vendor just installs the hydrant. So there's so many options and is is well, we haven't really had a whole lot of stability from the the direction of a single city manager for a long period of time since I've been here. And and we have another acting city manager right now and we want to get him in there and get have him have the discussion. And then hopefully we find someone long term because this is a way bigger long term problem than just the fire chief. It really is a it's a bigger discussion, H R, city administration, the council on how we solve it because part of that, part of those things, remember, there's two inch mains under some of those and we're never going to get sufficient fire flow out of it. So somebody at some point is going to have to pull the trigger on. Do we replace those mains or do we just say like this section? Until we get more money, like another WIF a grant or something, we're just not going to get there. And so it's a way bigger problem. And so we're trying to hit super targeted, like the ones that are getting replaced now are by the warehouses where we know we're going to need a lot of fire flow if we have a problem. And that's why we have those two tenders. One way older than the other one, but they both are here to bring in like railroad massive amounts of water because we got infrastructure problems till that's done. And then massive amounts of water because prime example, yesterday we were at MediaCom and we had to bring the tender because we were gonna be we're a thousand foot away from the closest hydrant and we were going to have to shut off Grand to run hoses across. So we just brought the tender out while we were doing our investigation. I mean, if we needed to, we could shut down Grand, but we try not to. So but it's it's a much more complex problem. And yet we could, we could spend literally a million bucks, but I wouldn't say give it to an outside vendor. I would say they're strategically working as a group with all the departments. We could solve it with enhancing some of the abilities of Public Works from people and equipment and using an outside vendor for some of the basic things. And I mean, there's a bunch of different ways.
Okay, so my follow-up question is, do you think these a hundred thousand would be enough? Because I was thinking the other day, you know, I'm more of a lines of 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 two hundred trying to fix this issue, would it would it make any difference? If we we would throw in all that money in there to?
At twenty six, I think they're twenty six grand for the last thing that I saw, it's twenty six grand for two hydrants to be installed. So you're only talking about on the ones that are actually need to be replaced, that's it's less than ten hydrants. So in when you've got eight hundred plus hydrants and a hundred and twenty of them, granted, some of that hundred and twenty never going to fix without changing the main out. But it's it's only ten out of the out of the mix. I mean, yes, more is better, but at the end of the day, are there other things we could do with that money? But that's ultimately your guys' call, but I we could take more and we would spend every dime of it on replacing hydrants.
I I just, I just think that, you know, a hundred, a hundred grand is is, you know, like you said, barely touching the surface, but I I do want this issue resolved, you know, within a few years. I'd say we can fix it in one year, but I I think that we may, we need to fix fix more every year, even if it's just ten hydrants. It's ten hydrants that we that you as a chief can, I guess, strategically will place on 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 different warehouses. So I I'm just saying, I don't, I don't even know if I have that authority to say, you know, you're only asking for a hundred, but I I really, I am really concerned about our our infrastructure as far as those fire hydrants and and I at this point, even though at two hundred, it would be only ten more fire hydrants. Am I correct? Those are ten fire hydrants that we can place, you know, closer to warehouses or businesses and stuff like that. And I am aware that, yes, we do need to change out the water main and stuff like that, but but that's that's really down the line, but I'm just saying. Now, I'm talking about the issues right now with warehouses and stuff like that because our our summers are getting dryer. So we just never know what's what might happen. I don't want to be caught flat with it, chief.
Yeah, no, I I agree. And I would, like I said, more is more is always better, but we already have a pretty hefty request and specifically too on the capital for the vehicles and stuff. And we're looking at, you know, multi-year on those as well, like we're three years out on. If we place the order tomorrow, we're three years out on getting an ambulance at this point. Same with the fire trucks. And we're still running our backups. Our our new engines will be five years old before we can get a a new backup truck, which would be a new primary engine. And and we're still running trucks with, you know, nineteen in front of them, nineteen ninety-eight kind of thing. So but I mean, that's, that was the objective on trying to break those up into three-year bites. So I mean, some vendors want you to commit right now and and then in three years pay it. Some other vendors are like, you're not really committed until we get a VIN number. But the ambulance and the fire truck manufacturers that we've used in the past want some form of a commitment to even get you in the queue for construction.
Oh, I have a question for city manager. Okay, I'm sorry. I have a question for Mr. Vermones or or Gene. Would would those a hundred grand, additional hundred grand? Would it would it really affect a whole lot of our budget? Because I it is they're at, I mean, yes, it is hefty what they're asking for, but with those additional hundred grand, would that break the bank? No?
Councilor, I think there's two ways of looking at it. I mean, it's it's all good. However, just realize that we have thousands of dollars in queue here for the next three years. So we won't have to make that outright expense when these ambulances are ready and and the engines are ready. So that's something at the end of the day, that's something that you guys need to consider. It's just food for thought. Okay.
Somebody else have a question?
Question, questions on the salary, on the salary schedule. I know we're going back to when they start, they're new, they're not new, the years of experience and all that stuff. So there are some like, I'll use one as an example, well, yourself, you're you're getting a salary increase yourself. And then battalion chief from eighty-five is going down to seventy-eight. Is that a new hire? Is that why?
So Mr. Kissinger had kind of talked about that earlier. It's an unfilled position and depending on who takes it, whether it's internal or external, it could be higher than that. So right now it's an open position. So we don't have the same we don't have the same numbers that you do as far as whether people are getting increases or not or changing.
What do you mean?
I do. Yeah, so okay. I didn't see that that column on that side, sorry.
The left side, yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, I'm I'm one hundred percent behind making sure that we pay people what they're worth. And if you'd like to move my thousand bucks, I would I would greatly appreciate you give that to Maida. Because
I don't I don't understand what you're saying. I give something to Myra.
Yeah, and and give it down to the administrative assistant, but
That's not my job.
Well, I know. But what I'm saying is if that's what we want to do, like I'm I'm not asking for an increase. What I'm asking for is specifically with those positions is putting the paramedics level with the engineers. That's my main objective. And then other than that, I think over the last couple of years, we've been pretty successful on getting the firefighters and and people up to the market rate. So
Well, okay, maybe I'm not asking it correctly.
Maybe I'm not understanding.
Yeah, maybe it's my fault. I'll ask it again. So for example, if you see, I'm just looking at what I'm given. Okay, I'm giving this salary payroll schedule and I'm looking at, for example, some of the decreases that are very drastic, going back to the battalion chief from eighty-five thousand going to seventy-eight.
Yeah, that was a twenty-year person who
Okay, that's all I need to know.
And that's a new hire on the other side.
Okay, so they're all justified. I mean, they're all, you know, like captain seventy-one thousand going down to sixty-six.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's an open, that's an open of vacancy currently. And some of these are are underfilled right now with yeah, some of them are underfilled right now with firefighters. So even where it says in this year where it's like sixty thousand, that may be filled with a forty thousand dollar recruit. And so some of these positions are underfilled currently.
Okay, the same token, you can hire someone within in-house and then those years of experience will be part of all the salary increases or whatever that will be taken into consideration. Okay.
Yeah, because it could it could go way up depending on how long they've been here. And when we had the last hiring of engineers, a lot of them were like twelve and and thirteen year employees. So it went way above the the starting when we implemented the years of service. So I get what you're asking now. Yeah. These are base and they could go way up as we bring in in people. Just like the the people that are going to medic school. There's a medic wage, but when they when they get that medic increase, they're going to get their years of service as a firefighter in there. So it could go up above where the medics.
And I'm sure you like to recruit from within, give them the opportunity. They've served the city of Nogales for a long time. So some of those will definitely be increased. Because of the years of service will be taken into consideration.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Somebody else? Chief, you know, how many of these positions do you have open, you know? Because it's misleading, but you know, battalion chief is dropping. You have the captain going from the sixty to to sixty-five that's open.
So we have one battalion chief position open currently. We just offered someone the position, the second one that was open. We have we have one person as an acting captain right now. All the engineer positions are full. All but two of the paramedic positions are full. And for the most part, the positions are full of recruits that are in the academy. It's not like, I think we have, I think we're down two or three people total compared to the number of F T Es were allowed. So like what we could have done is said, okay, we're going to put twelve people through the academy and then only take seven. But we only hire the number of people that we have F T E spots for. So when there's, so a lot of these people are either in the academy or, you know, up until last month, we had four people in medic school. So we had pulled them off the truck, they'd gone to school. And so I think right now we're two or three people short total besides four. Okay, okay. So four with the two new requested positions. So we have people that are just in process at this point. And they're finished the academy. I think it's June sixteenth. And then we just have to wait a few weeks for the the state to give them their certs. But they all have their, all but one has their I M T already. So they'll be on trucks driving while we're waiting.
Okay, and you're asking for two new ambulances. We just got two delivered a couple of months ago.
Yes.
Okay. And whatever happened to the two used ones that we we purchased?
So one of them is getting set up to be the battalion chief rig right now. That will go in service on June fifth and the other one we're going to use when we, when the new B C shows up, that'll be the rotating battalion chief rig. And then the other one's using, we're going to use for prevention. Part of part of what we're using it for is if we approve that position, we went from thirty inspections a month to roughly thirty a week now. And so we're doing a lot more inspections on the fireside. And so we're using it as a support vehicle.
So you're using ambulance to as regular vehicles almost?
Yeah, there's seven three diesels and they don't have def fluid and they're only a hundred thousand miles. So they are really sturdy trucks and compared to some of the six O problems and some of the issues that we've had with some of the other ambulances that are kind of sitting behind Station Two. We could use those all day long compared to some of the expenses on repairs on the Chevys that we've had too.
What what's the second second set of turnouts dash cancer prevention?
So for the last two years, we've been spending about sixty thousand dollars a year replacing turnouts. One of the things is as you're looking, there's basically firefighters and and the presumptive cancer diagnosis when it comes to the workers comp is really high. And so one of the things is the is the turnouts is they're saying that clean your turnouts more frequently, having a second set because what happens is we just, out of the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we just bought the one extractor and two dryers for the station so we can do clean the turnouts, but still they have to be ready for the next fire. And so if we don't have a second set of turnouts, some people don't wash their gear like they should because they want to be ready for the next fire. And essentially, it's the seams in the turnouts is where people are getting cancer. And so they're wanting people to wash them after each fire. And so they, and the problem is they're expensive. And they have a short shelf life. So basically a ten-year durability on a set of turnouts. And what the city was doing up until a couple of years ago was And what the city was doing up until a couple of years ago was waiting till they were expired and then just buying one set at a time. What we started doing was replacing turnouts, but replacing them, like, there's some people that have two sets right now, but they're close to the end on their first set of ten, but they just got their new. So we went out two years this year and bought more turnouts. So that is a, we could continue with the sixty grand and replace some every year or we could take it in one shot and do all of it, a second set. We could, we could split it in half. I am leery about buying things in bulk like that because at some point you're going to have to cough up another huge chunk of money. And so what I've been trying to do over the last few years is buy things in smaller proportions. Like, we've been replacing radios at, I want to say like thirty or forty thousand dollars a year. But because I know capital is going to be short over the next five years and I just wanted to get that out there for discussion. We put the whole set of turnouts and we put the whole set of portable radios. You could split it into different, different criterias and back some of those numbers down. But I just wanted to have the conversation about how we do it. I mean, I'd love to buy them all tomorrow, but it's, it's really, it's expensive. And then in ten years, we have another, and at that point, who knows with inflation where it's going to be? So we have another at least two hundred and sixty thousand dollar shot of turnouts, so. Different, like I said, different in the cap.
Are you inquiring for any grants on these purchases?
We have in the past applied for some grants. Part of the reason why we have been working with finance to try to get away from the large bucket mentality that we had before Jean. So before, everything was just like one big bucket. And so we didn't have a really good breakdown of all of our spending and stuff. And we've been really trying to break it out into different, use the G L codes like they are, add a few G L codes here and there to have a better understanding. Because looking at the grants as they were before, the numbers didn't make a whole lot of sense. So, yeah, we've been applying for grants. And one of the things that we're seeing from the A F G grants is that if it's not a regional grant, you're really not high on the priority unless you're a volunteer department, like, for example. We didn't get our S C B As because we bought them because we did them by ourselves, like, two and a half, three years ago. But like, for example, Patagonia just got a three hundred thousand dollar tender because they're essentially a volunteer department. So they're going for volunteer or regional. So there are some regional grant things we're looking at with our, our compadres to the north and east of us. But I have not put anything in for those yet, but we can. And that is the plan.
As far as I know, it's, to be honest, it's dedicated to each department to do their grants, right?
Yes, so far that's what we have and they can get assistance from finance or whoever has that expertise.
Okay, now, like, the bay exhaust system and stuff like that, Ms. Jean, wouldn't, wouldn't that fall into facilities?
So we've had a unique relationship with facilities over the last couple of years of not knowing exactly what falls where. And so I put them in, we've moved, like, the roofing stuff got moved out a couple of years ago. I mean, I'm okay, I just, again, I'm putting it in there to have the discussion because I don't, I don't want someone to say, well, we didn't say this is what we needed. Like, I know, this is a lot of stuff on that list and we may not get it all this year. We may not even get all of it in the next couple of years. But it's there to, it's there to have the discussion so you know what we need. And then from there, we can figure out how to get there. So maybe one station next year, maybe we put it under facilities. But for that, what I did for that number is I went out, found an R F P online that another city had done for two stations of similar size, plugged in that number for the conversation perspective for today, and then that's, that's why we're there.
Okay. The A E Ds or city buildings, would that also be covered by any, any grants, Mr. Ben Moyes?
We could look for grants, also, we can also reach like we have in the past, where we have lately, where, to Mariposa and see what they have. I'm pretty sure that even through a grant through Mariposa, they can probably help us acquire a few of them.
And that's a line item in that conversation with Dr. P about enhancing A E Ds. And it says police sergeants, but at the time, I didn't know who was going to be the CPR instructors. And so it's, it's to work on that CPR program. But again, it's just from a conversation perspective of, it's stuff that we probably should have in the buildings and on the police cars. Like, I mean, they're there before us on almost every single call and they've been doing CPR plenty of times when we've showed up because they're mobile and we're not. And so that A E D, having that there is super important to start getting the heart back in its rhythm. And so I'm.
Go ahead, Mr. Michael. No, go ahead, let me breathe.
While you're looking at my stuff, okay, meantime, Mr. Ben Moyes, and that's one thing that you could look at is like, some things should, like, he's probably right, you know, shouldn't come out of that category. Some should come out of other categories. And earlier I talked about having some programs or some events, where do they come out of? Mayor's office, do they come out from parks? So I think we, something you should look into. So my other question is, I have another question here on the training. You're requesting seventy-three thousand? I'm just curious, is some of that training, does it apply to things like staff development, towards like morale building and self-improvement? You know, the whole idea of inclusiveness and developing a positive environment? As opposed to just like, you know, targeting, just going and getting training for that one thing they do?
So the seventy-three thousand is essentially training for job-specific functions. A majority of that's medic school.
Okay.
Now, where that money that you're talking about is, and we've reached out to an industrial psychologist from the U of A to see if we could get maybe some grad students to help us with some of those things. But that comes from the other line item of the professional services line item is where some of that money is. The last couple of years, a lot of that's been spent on investigations and investigations and the D O L audit. The plan for next year is, we're looking at, basically, we have a state, a guy who has a state. Okay, I'm trying to make it short. I know I've been sitting here a long time. So the state has specific things you can teach and you have to be certified by the state to teach them. So we're talking to a guy who is certified by the state for leadership stuff and his fee to come down and teach what would be. Because we rotate shifts, so we need to just teach the same class three days in a row. So all the people that are interested can attend it. So his fee is in that line item for next year. So we have a leadership one that we're looking at for there. We have a training one that we're trying to get in, a driving one that we're trying to get the instructor down for. And then I'm talking to the industrial psychologist from the U of A about one of, like you said, cohesiveness, coming together as a group, team-building stuff. That is, in the past, I've used an industrial psychologist from a different company that's helped out quite a bit in that. They come in, they look at the environment in general and then talk to people and then help you build a plan that's along those lines to make it better.
Well, I know from experience, I mean, you don't have to hire agencies that cost thousands of dollars, right? You can get local agencies to come and give, you know, simple presentations. I know logistics is a little difficult because they have different hours, but that's, I mean, I'm sure you're an expert in that area. But I was just wondering if that's part of this training fee? So I guess you have those things in mind, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
To bring in, yeah.
And we've used, we've used another company for the, like, for people who were new to their position. Like, when we got the battalion chiefs, we had them work with an outside consultant, actually job coach, basically on how to deal with your new position and how to deal with the change in environment from being one of the folks to being not one of the folks anymore. Because it is the hardest turn that people make is going from being part of the bargaining unit and everybody's your friend to being in management now. And so we had someone work with them on that. And so that is the plan moving forward. Like I said, we have a couple of irons in the fire right now as far as leadership stuff. We went and we talked to every employee, said, here, what are your career objectives? And we have basically this spreadsheet that we're putting together and we're trying to figure out common things that a lot of people are looking for so we can bring the classes down. Because just like when we brought the I S O classes down, not the I S O, but the.
I saw it.
One hundred, two hundred, three hundred. The I C S. When we got the I C S classes down, it was easier to do twelve or fourteen people here and give them shift coverage and make sure they could get there as opposed to sending one or two to Tucson or one or two to Phoenix. So we've been really focusing on, can we bring the class here? We did a fire investigator this week in conjunction with Rio Rico and Tubac where we all got to do it and it's an N F A or National Fire Academy class. And it only costs us twenty-five bucks a person to do it here, as opposed to sending them somewhere else. So we've got.
Thank you. I have another question, just very quickly, is, I'm just curious. Do you share this budget building collaboration type of thing with the union, with all your employees? Or is it just you? I know how the budget things work, send them to the directors and they fill out these forms and stuff. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
So as far as the training and education stuff, we do.
The budget building?
Yeah.
Did you talk to the other employees about it, your employees?
Yes.
Yes, exactly.
So the captains know, like, what we had listed as capital request items. When we did, like I said, when we did the, the money that had been moved over to the, for the ambulances at the captains meeting, we all sat down, set priorities, everybody's seen the spreadsheet on where we are with all of that and what's been ordered.
How about the other firemen?
No, not from a, not from a field perspective.
Okay.
I mean, essentially.
I'm just curious. I'm sure you have your system in place.
What we're trying to do is, and this is one of the challenges and I've, I've had some discussion with Mr. Machado about it, is getting the people to the level that they're supposed to be. So for example, the captain should have a certain amount of authority and a certain amount of responsibility. And we want them to have that communication, so I don't want to be doing all of that. And the B C shouldn't be doing all of that. So we're really, as we're, we're trying to teach everybody their job role. And so some of it, like, when we have the captains meetings, the union is there at the meeting with us. They're welcome to come in. And then we've had other people come in as guest speakers, basically. But we're trying to really have it funnel down.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else?
On these, Mr. Mayor, on these capitals, chief, what I'm looking at, like, the A E Ds and the hazmat rescue equipment and the T R T rescue equipment, have you ever thought of putting that under a Shishcap grant?
Yeah, we still get, every year we get Shishcap money. So we still get stuff from that and this is some of it on top of it. Like, this year, basically, we needed to buy new Level A and Level B suits. And so that was beyond the grant amount of money. And so, yeah, Frank Granados has been working with us every year for the T R T. And some of it is basic stuff, like ropes are only good for ten years. And so, plus we train and we break stuff, and so some of it is just replacing that. You know, right now, we're replacing boots on the truck because they've been in boxes for ten years and they're.
Right.
So, yeah, we still get, we still get a chunk out of Shishcap too.
Okay, so I'm telling you because I'm part of the board of the Governor's Regional Advisory Committee in Southern Park. And, and they always, we always, obviously, award anytime there's a regional concept to it, right? So that's what you're doing with Frank?
Yeah, he, he compiles our whole wish list from all the departments down here and Yuma. So it's Cochise, Yuma, us, Tubac, Rio Rico, Sonoda. And then he puts together the big list and then it goes through Tucson and then Tucson farms it back to us. So we've gotten in the last couple of years, probably another twenty or thirty grand worth of hazmat equipment where, like, we got a, we got an air cart for the tunnels so we can go in and still be on air, like, two hundred feet now compared to before where we really couldn't. So, and we've gotten a lot of stuff through that grant too.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, we'll look at these and see where we're at. Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you very much. I enjoyed it. I love talking about this stuff.
Ms. Jean?
Okay. Along with the fire, when you will see that there's the voluntary retirement pension, we still pay those based off the contract from twenty-two years ago for certain retirees. They get paid the fifty-five dollars a month until they die. So that's how you kind of, until they pass, does that sound better? I'm sorry. As soon as I said that, I think that's not even what I wrote. I wrote down until passing. So every year, you'll kind of see that one decrease until it eventually goes away. There we go, until they go to the firehouse in the sky. Nogales rides, we're going to actually do tomorrow because that is one of Juan's. Facilities will be done tomorrow because that is Alejandro's. And engineering will be done tomorrow because it's Juan's.
So where we're going?
So we're moving on to cemetery.
Animal control tomorrow too? Jean, animal control tomorrow?
Animal control, if you guys want to just jump, it's right after the cemetery. That one's cut and dry. The county tells us what we need to pay them every year. It's kind of like the library we do to them, they do the same thing to us. Do you want to do your presentation with the cemetery or at the parks?
Well, it's all in one, in one PowerPoint, so.
Let's do the, it's the one that says preview, the bottom one. We'll see if it'll open.
I sent it to your email as well, sir.
So if it doesn't open, we may have to go to your email.
Sixty-nine.
Should we go cemetery or?
Yeah. Cemetery first.
Why don't we start with parks first because that's the way my PowerPoint is, parks first and then cemetery.
Okay.
Seventy-nine.
So parks, it's going to show on page seventy-eight is where it starts, so seventy-eight, seventy-nine.
Okay. Good afternoon, mayor and council. So this is our presentation, which will incorporate the cemetery as well. So Parks and Recreation, who we are and what we do. The goal of Parks and Recreation Department is to support the community through multiple efforts. We work with local organizations to create safe and positive athletic environments and community events for the city of Nogales. For athletics, we do collaborate with N U S D, Lurless Catholic, Ed Options, Santa Cruz Soccer League, the BITE Program, Nogales National Little League, R S L, F C Tucson, among many others. For community events, we have collaborated with Circles of Peace, Desert Sky Gymnastics, My Kid, Mariposa Community Health Center, Santa Cruz Training Center and, among other nonprofits in Nogales as well. As we continue to grow, we want to create more city programs to add to our recreational activities. Currently, we are collaborating with the Phoenix Suns for our basketball youth programs. We do have adult basketball leagues throughout the year as well as softball and tournaments and leagues. We do want to bring back the kickball tournament as well. We're looking at creating a flag football league, having family fun days that will incorporate cornhole tournaments and considering the possibility of foot golf, which would not absorb the cost of keeping the greens green. We have lots of ideas that we are in process of and we continue to move forward with growing recreational opportunities in our community. We currently have over fifty-one properties that we care for, from the very small, like Perkins Park, to the very large, the twenty properties that create the old golf course in Meadow Hills. Our staff does consist of director, recreational supervisor, which is Jerry Garcia, one administrative assistant, Jessica, two building maintenance, we have one in the morning and one in the afternoon that also works on Saturdays. Parks manager, which is David Oropeza, two cemetery groundsman and fourteen parks groundsman. So I did color quote my slides. So we did ask for more personnel just to bring us up to par with all our city properties. Our guys are kind of spread thin with all the properties, so we are asking for two more to alleviate that as well as with. So we are asking for two more to alleviate that as well as with overtime. And then the next slide, I did, when I created this PowerPoint. I incorporated the county ones because at that point we weren't sure if we were going to hire them or if the county was going to hire them. Same thing with the two vehicles. One would be for the two additional uh, personnel for the city and then one would be for the county ones. Again, that would be split up if the county's purchasing the vehicle. For all our special events, we always get requests for more tables for chairs. We usually use our IGA and request them from NUSD. But I think it would benefit the city if we had our own chairs. Tables and a trailer to carry those off in. And that would be our storage as well, keeping everything in the trailer so that nothing gets lost. We did bring the driving range back up. We are working on getting the machine in there. Um, but we do need. Um. The ball, the the ball picker upper, picker upper.
Collector.
Yeah, just to, I mean, because I don't see having somebody go out there and picking up one by one. So we do. Want to purchase this to help that and get more people out to the driving range. Yeah, I see, with the with the little manitas. Now, the green slides are our building improvements. The heating and cooling system in the gym does not work. I'm sure most of you noticed during our vaccines, it was either freezing. Or boiling in there. Uh, Mariposa did have to bring in their their. Space heaters. And in the summer, it was just, we did have fans, we had the doors open, we tried to. Circulate that air as much as possible. I have had somebody look at it. They are very old units and they don't make the parts for those units anymore. So we would have to purchase a new system to get that back up to par. And I mean, being that. Direct center, the gym is usually used in in the events of emergencies. I'd like to have that up to date in case, you know, something else ever happens. Same thing with um, the building paint as well. Whenever it rains, it rains inside the gym as well. Not from the ceiling, but it seeps in through the walls because the walls are not sealed. So I do want to paint that inside and out so that. We can keep that water damage from continuing. We are carrying forward the money for Paluduro. We are still working with architects on that. Um, we're working as well with the. Child program that wants to be housed there as well and looking in for some grant funding.
What's, which was that, uh?
The one that they came and presented to the council. Do you remember what they were, that child advocacy, child and family advocacy program where they were housed at the sheriff's office for a while? I don't know where they're housed. I think they're still at the sheriff's office. They came in the fall, yeah. No, Emile, Elizalde came, yeah. Yeah. So now, capital projects, we do not have the big tent. We do have the ten by ten tents. But we don't have the twenty by twenty tent anymore. I think, I believe that was damaged before I even started. So this would be for those big city events or when we have other events that require a bigger tent. I'm just reading, just to make sure. Yes. In order to keep our equipment from. Putting more miles on our trucks, the gas and everything else, we'd like to have a storage unit up in Meadow Hills for all the north end parks. Um, right now, like I said, everything has to be brought up from down here, creating more gas expenses as well. We did finally knock down the WIC building. What we'd like to place there are two pickleball courts. And if those are placed, we'd like to start having tournaments and. And other events with those pickleball courts as that is a sport that is growing significantly. Okay, the bathrooms and concession stand at Memorial need a lot of care. Um, looking at them, it would cost us more to. Invest and and bring everything up to par than to just close them off and create a new one. This would be knocking down the current concession stand and building this kind of like U-shaped. Building behind Memorial, which would have the concession stand and new bathrooms. Skate park, we are carrying forward fifty thousand, but to bring that park up to par with other skate parks in other cities. Not using the rebar because that is already starting to rust and becoming a safety hazard. Um, everything would be concreted out. That would cost approximately two hundred thousand. Couple of years ago, uh, council voted to put in ADA. Bleachers at Little League, but it did not include the canopies. So this would be for the canopies for those existing. Up and bleachers that are there right now. Additionally, with those ADA. Uh, bleachers, it eliminates seating and eliminates space. But it does bring us into compliance. So we are asking for. A regular bleacher system to be placed with a canopy to create more seating for Little League. It's been requested that we have more parks in our bent or more seats and benches in our parks. So this is, would cover. Picnic benches and. Benches without the table. Twenty-five grand would bring us ten tables and seven benches to incorporate in all our parks across the city. We still have the property there on Trinidad that we'd like to move forward with, but we do need funding for it and that would cost approximately ninety-five thousand. Looking at Turley, we'd like to create. A stage there instead of having the stage for our big events, sitting in the mud because it always rains on the Fourth of July. The stage would be, the concrete would be on this side of the building. Keeping all electrical wires, anything above away from the crowds. Currently, when they set up a stage, wire has to be run into the middle of field. So this would be include a cover. The stage and. We could do multiple events. So it would be not just for the Fourth of July, but maybe we could start bringing back concerts under the stars. Different events. I know soccer uses that area, that tiny little like size of this table stage as a stage. If we had a bigger stage there, I think it would benefit everyone as a whole. We do, we are bringing forward one point three million. But we did request more funding, which is about three hundred and fifty thousand, but we need an additional three hundred, bringing us to six hundred and thirty. Um, because we have used three hundred. Of our funding that was allocated for this. In the plans. Now, we need to pay upfront for the park. That money will come back to us in reimbursement and the match. So it's just for that upfront cost of the park itself, which is one point nine million dollars. And you see they're moving very quickly on it. Memorial also needs new sound system. We did bring up the lights. Everything's coming up. But we do need a new sound system and. And chief, I'm sure you would agree with that one. Because that sound system is is very old. So this cost would in. Include Memorial Park and a mobile sound system for Fletcher one and two. As mentioned, we are carrying forward the one point three for the Deschaux Park project. The one hundred thousand for the Challenger Lights and Place Structure and fifty thousand for the skate park improvements. So now into cemetery, we are asking for a a new person. As an admin assistant, we are trying to work with our mortuaries to. Get them to communicate better with us so we avoid those issues where people are coming up with a receipt saying, that's my plot. And someone's already buried there. So we are working with legal to to get them to talk to us first where they're burying, who they're burying, because our records only go up to two thousand seventeen. And since then. I mean, with COVID, there was a lot of people. That took vacancy in the cemetery. Um, and we don't have those records and we're trying to get that communication open with our mortuaries, but. They don't share with us who they're burying, where they're burying or anything like that. So we are working with legal. On that, therefore, we'd need that extra person to just focus on the cemetery issues. The gates are very old and rusted. We were able to. Repair them enough to where they open and shut because we are closing the gates at night. Um, but they do. Need to be replaced. That is the first thing that people see when they come into the cemetery and it would make. The impression much better. And but we are, and we are carrying forward twenty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-two for our lights in the cemetery. We did start. But that has been put on hold and hopefully we'll get to them. In the fall.
Those are regular lights or?
They're solar.
Solar?
They're solar. There's no electricity in the park right now or in the park in the cemetery.
Are those some of the ones that were stolen from the cemetery?
There was two lights stolen from the columbarium. How they got up there, I don't know. We have seen less damage in the cemetery since we've been locking it up and we've had more police officers rolling through. Um, we haven't seen as much graffiti. There hasn't been as many accidents. Um, but we did have those lights just recently stolen. And they're very high up. And that's it. So if you have any questions?
I have a question, mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Bonilla.
Uh, Ms. Travers, um, on the stage that you want to do, uh, where we have the Fourth of July. Um. You do know that when you build a stage, it has to be. Uh, a certain dimension. It either has to be a twenty by twenty or or a. Uh, twenty by forty or forty by forty. And that's because uh, if other. Production companies come into that park, that's, those are the the measurements that they work by. If you make it an odd size. Then you're going to run into a bunch of problems where the trustee won't. Won't fit. It it'll overshoot it or it'll just look odd. So ha- have you, do you have any conceptual um? Designs on that or?
Yeah, we worked off the quote that was um, created back in two thousand nineteen, which addressed all those issues. Would be filling in. The planters area, creating more space to have that completed.
So it won't bleed into the track, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Montiel, go ahead.
Couple of questions, um, Mrs. Travers. So I got the ARPA monies here from the city. I'd have requested that. So. There's five hundred thousand dollars has been spent, encumbered, spent already, right? From this three point two, the previous three point two million, right?
Well, there were the requests that I did in the fall, yes.
Exactly. So it's from the second batch. Okay. So there's a one point, uh, one hundred and thirty-three. Is that going to be for the Fletcher? That's going to be for some of these items here?
I hadn't included that because I haven't brought it to you guys for ARPA. That will be your guys' decision.
Okay, yeah.
Because I still um, wanted to bring forward the covering the racquetball courts at Anza. And that would be about thirty-five thousand, but I was going to bring that as a request to ARPA.
So that's yet to be discussed, right? The remaining, okay. So this here on the capital request, when you have carryover, 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 is, what what is carryover? Is that, I know what it is, but is that the ARPA?
Or? No, it's, they were projects that were approved last year that we're carrying forward.
Yeah, but paid by the ARPA or they're?
No, they were capital request.
Capital requests, they're from general fund, okay.
So those funds are, should be. Available already?
Yes.
Okay. Hmm. And also here, going back to this salaries. Um. Okay. Uh, just one second. Housing, no, where are we? Got a little bit out of order here, parks and right. So uh, that going back to the salary increases or decreases, just to get some clarification on the parks. Coordinator, for example, is that a new position that?
Yeah, that's a reclassification that we're requesting.
Oh, it's a reclassification. And how was that based?
Based on the responsibilities that the individual has.
Okay, so they added responsibilities.
Ones that he was already doing.
Okay, so that's a seven thousand dollar increase. Okay. So going back to my question is like, who determines that that, those responsibilities have a seven thousand dollar value?
We work with HR on that.
Okay, so you work on HR.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But still, uh, you know, Carmen and. What determines that, that. That size of a, of a. Additional. Uh, earnings? What determines that that increase, you know?
It's based, as I mentioned before, on research and other similar positions from other entities.
You can, you can compare Nogales to Scottsdale.
Oh, no. No, no.
Who do you compare to?
Similar uh, positions. I'm not, we're not going as far as entities um, as a whole. So we do compare with positions that are similar in in duties and responsibilities and department size. And we have, for for each position that we have in the city, there is a file. And we have all the copies in there with everything that we research and everything we compare with. And we go back and forth and and that's how um, all these, these reclassifications are determined. Uh, additionally, what we do is we we send them to our. Consultant. And and they'll, they'll help us with that as well. The one that does the compensate.
My, my concern, and I've talked, talked it over, is uh, you know. I, I really like the the groundskeepers getting.
Yeah.
Get, getting um. Uh, you know, increases. Um. My concern is, you know. The size of the, the size of the, of the increase and. And basically, you know, that uh. That uh, it's. You know, you're. Your park manager and and your coordinator. Uh, I know there, there are two different obligations and stuff like that. But, you know, uh, you're giving it all to to one guy. The park manager is still going to be above the the, the park's coordinator.
Yes.
Uh, but yet the coordinator's getting, getting all. All the pay raise and the park manager is not getting anything.
Yes, uh, so it's two different things. One is the reclassification of the job description, not not solely the person. The second thing is.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going by the persons.
Sure, sure.
Uh, take names, take names out of this, you know, I'm going by by position.
Sure. The second thing is on those raises or adjustments. Um, those are based on the year's service. And if if there is a position that is already above. That amount, keep in mind, that's. We're, we're not moving in there yet.
Mr. Mayor, an example is anybody that's with the city for over ten years and they're, they're at their peak. Um, salary, so they won't, they won't go up anymore. Um. I'm sorry. With uh, Mrs. Travers' presentation, I'm looking at there's fifty-one parks that you take care of. And then we're about to inherit. Uh, a couple more in the county. You know, this is the parks coordinator. I think this is a perfect example. We were talking earlier that there is a possibility of having a career path with the city. Uh, that you don't always have to be a groundskeeper. And and I think this is a perfect example that the city is is giving opportunities uh, where we can. And again, there's no names behind that, but I think the opportunity in general is that. Um, the responsibilities are more. And if we keep. Our personnel, our kids from going out of town and getting the job with Phoenix, Scottsdale, anywhere else and staying in Nogales. Knowing that they will be compensated just fully for what they do. I think that's a win-win.
No, my.
You go ahead.
Well, no, my, my other question is, I know. I don't know what you want to call it, supervisors and higher up levels are are. Not neglected, but are prohibited of doing overtime and stuff like, is that going to happen to the same thing with with the park coordinator?
No, it's, it's still a. It's exempt. But it is exempt.
Under what, under what rules or what?
So, so an exempt position is you cannot, you cannot work or or you will not be compensated for overtime. Uh, doesn't mean that you don't work extra hours. It means that you don't get compensated. That's all inclusive of your salary. In other words.
So that's what's going to happen with same with the coordinator?
Yes, the park coordinator is exempt, so he's only going to get forty thousand, nine seventeen a year. Uh, regardless of how many hours he works. And that's why we have administrative time, but it has to be cleared through the supervisor and the city manager. So years of service have been added because this this gentleman has over ten years, so he's peaked at his, at his position.
Okay, Ms. Montiel?
Yeah, so for an example, um. There's other positions in the city and we went through them that have been here and they're not getting a salary increase. So from last year to this year's budget, they're not getting a salary increase, okay? But yet, there's some people here that are getting a thousand dollars salary increase, okay? So maybe I'm just, I don't understand. And I think we need to have like a study session on this and having Mr. Machado leak, his legal opinion on some of these things because. I think, for example, some of this ground, if I'm a groundskeeper, I'm getting. A one thousand two hundred dollar raise, but yes, a parks coordinator is getting seven thousand. But yet. Yeah, you can justify that fact that we're coordinating with a county, which we haven't agreed yet to or signed anything, but. but these groundkeepers will also have added responsibilities, yet they're just getting a couple of, I mean, a smaller, significant smaller increase. So, I mean, we could spend the whole day here, but I, I'm just always concerned about the, the bottom quartile, you know, and I think we're, we need to speak up for them, and which I, I, I do. And so I, I got a call yesterday asking, I mean, I've been here for a long time and haven't had a salary increase in three, four years, but yet some people have been here for two years and they're getting salary increases. So maybe we just need to have a, a hearing, not a hearing, but a, a study session on this, man, Mr. Baho, Mr. Your Chief, Mr. Bermudas. Yeah, we go back and forth. So.
It's been a long day.
It's been a long day. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well.
Thank you.
Something we're looking at. Next is cemetery?
Thank you, Renee.
Okay, but no questions on cemetery? Okay. Thank you. Who's next, Ms. Jean?
So that rounds out our general fund at three o'clock. So tomorrow we would have our Nogales Rides Engineering with all of our herfen streets and also our facilities with all of our public works. Is there anything else that anybody needs to discuss today?
We just have one request before we go, and I'm sorry, but this is for the public and also we want to go. But can I have a, a detailed list of the revenue? I know you listed, but it's not listed here. So please provide a breakdown of, of the capital projects so that I could see where the twenty-four million, what the twenty-four million, I think I asked your assistant here earlier. So we can have that tomorrow, the breakdown. Thank you. The budget summary of all the funds. It's not a breakdown.
Also, Jean, if it's possible, can you provide us with a comparison list all in one page of the increases that we're looking at as far as salary increases? Because we've got to go through every department, but can you just make it just one Excel sheet that just so we can see the difference of how much is going up in, in just salaries? Yes, thank you.
You have a question?
Do you want that, like, by department? Like, do you want all the general fund together? Or do you want? Okay, general fund and then like streets and then, sure.
Anything else? Mr. Mayor Morris?
No, I think we're pretty much done for today. We'll pick it up tomorrow morning at ten again, and hopefully we can finish up tomorrow.
I know you're off the stand, Ms. Travers, but are we going after grants to get any of these expenditures?
We will be looking into grants with the state as well as Tohono O'odham.
Tohono O'odham, yeah. We just got a letter from them a couple of weeks, a couple of days ago. Hey, the other thing is, I've been approached by people trying to work on Paluduro's golf course. Is there any plans on the golf course, actual golf course or the, or the, even the, the facilities?
Well, yes, we're working, we're working with architects on the, on the facility itself. As for the golf course, we're looking at different options because the cost of maintaining a golf course is too much for the city to handle.
Okay, just so everybody knows, I've been confronted with people trying, from Meadow Hills, trying to make type of association or something, I'm working on the golf course, and I told them, I'll hear them out and see what, what the plans are and, and how it would work and, and see if it's feasible. And then, but the other thing is on the pickleball courts, where were you at with those?
Well, that is one of my requests.
Is that for right there in that area?
Right there, where, where, no, where the WIC building was, there next to the rec.
Up here?
Yes.
What about those courts up, down by the? By, by?
Well, I would have to add to my request then. Or you could add ARPA money for that. I hadn't wanted to request anything over there until we were done bringing the building up to, to what it needs to be.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Doh.
Yes, I, I have a question on, on that request for the storage garage at Paluduro. Is that something that's going to be constructed? And is it going to take away from the building that's already there, like if, for any future use of, we ever want to do something with that area? Would that affect it in any way?
No, it would not take away from the building. As mentioned, we are working with architects to remodel that building to make it like a Parks and Rec on the north side. The storage is a covered storage area, and it would probably be in that parking area, not, not affecting the building or the golf course itself.
And then there's a slab already on the right side across the building that was previously stored.
Correct. Mm-hmm. That's, yes.
Okay. Thank you for coming back. Any comment, questions?
I'm going to wait.
Fine, tomorrow, same time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ten o'clock tomorrow.
Ten o'clock? Yes, move to adjourn this meeting? Again.